Okay, we're good.
All right, thank you. Call to order the Tuesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty meeting for Weathersfield Planning and Zoning Commission. Joe, would you call the roll, please?
I would accept. I am having trouble opening the packet with the agenda for some reason. Let me try one more time, and if not.
I can do it if you want. This is not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Rich?
Yep.
I am here. Mr. Hammer?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes? Mr. Oikle? Mr. Oikle, he's here, he's on mute. Mr. Dean?
Here.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Mr. Drake?
Here.
Ms. Antoniak is not here. Mr. Homicki?
Here.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. So that's nine. Everybody will be participating. First item is Old Business Two Point One Continued Public Hearing on Application Two Thousand and Fifty Four dash Twenty dash Z. Town of Weathersfield singing the zoning text amendment in accordance with Section Ten One F of the Weathersfield zoning regulations for self-storage facilities. And we opened the hearing last time, had some good discussion about it. Peter went back and made some changes to the regulation draft based on those comments and asked Peter to basically run through what the changes are.
I can do that. Just in summary, you did in your packet, you should have received a revised proposed set of regulations dated November thirteenth of this year. In summary, we made changes in nine different areas to the previous proposal. We revised the definition a little bit of mixed-use development. Secondly, we revised the language regarding the uses that are permitted in the underlying zoning. There was a question about the BP zone and in terms of whether residential could be permitted in a mixed-use development, even though the underlying zone does not permit it. So we clarified that to answer the question. And the answer to the question is no, it would not be otherwise permitted if it's not permitted in the underlying zone. So we clarified that. Number three, we added language that allows the commission to grant approval for existing adaptive reuse of buildings so that the mixed-use requirement in the multi-story building requirement do not have to be satisfied in those cases. Number four, we reduced the separating distance between these facilities from five thousand feet to fifteen hundred feet, as there was a concern about that. We added we revised the language for the percentage of the building facade that had to have windows. And we clarified that so that that only applies to facades that are visible from a public street. So if you've got a rear facade or a side facade and there's no visibility back there, we've eliminated that requirement. Number six, we added some language because there was a concern about the garage-style doors. So we clarified that you can't do that if it's visible from a street. We added some additional screening requirements for truck-loading dock areas that might abut a residential property. Number eight, we added language that the commission can relax some of the building density requirements as an incentive to encourage mixed use. So rather than we so we just clarified that, that that's an incentive allowed by the commission if they deem it appropriate. And then lastly, number nine, we reduced the parking ratios and clarified a little bit about how the parking applies in a mixed-use development scenario. Previously, the parking requirement was one space for every fifty storage units, and we've changed that to one space for every hundred storage units. We've made that a lesser requirement. We've also clarified that if there is a commercial component or another residential component, those uses would have to meet the normal parking standards as well as the self-storage would have to meet this new self-storage standard. So that, in a nutshell, were the revisions that after going back and listening to the meeting again, we felt addressed the majority of the concerns that were noted basically two weeks ago at your last public hearing.
Okay, thanks.
I'd be happy to go through the specifics, but that was just a quick summary of the various changes. And your version has those sections highlighted in yellow, so it's clear what sections we revised and which sections stayed the same.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the commission have questions for Peter?
Yeah, this is this is David Drake. I have a quick question. Hey, Peter, I wouldn't, I didn't know you were going to go all the way down to fifteen hundred feet. How many at fifteen hundred feet, how many can you fit on Silasstein Highway based on what we got now? Do you have any idea? Could you get three? I know you get two. Could you get three?
I'm not sure if you could get three because only portions of the Silasstein Highway are zoned regional commercial. It's basically the half of the Silasstein Highway south of south of Maple.
So I guess I guess in my mind, I'm thinking twenty-five hundred feet to fifteen hundred feet is probably the same thing.
We talked, yeah, we talked about twenty-five at the last meeting, but I, after looking at it, I knocked it down to fifteen hundred. Yeah, it's hard to say.
I mean, it sounds like it's the same thing.
I think it is. You might, you might be able to squeeze in. If there was a site available, you might be able to squeeze in another, you know, closer to the Rocky Hill town line.
Correct, yeah, okay, fair enough.
Yeah, frankly, that was, that was my question, too.
So if you wanted to be safe, you could, you could, you know, knock it up to the twenty-five hundred just to be extra safe. But there in the, also in your packet, you did get a copy of the slide presentation from the last meeting, which has the graphic in there, so it might be worth taking a quick peek.
Yeah, I couldn't tell from that. That's why, I mean, I, you know.
So the yellow, yeah, I got you. I can see what you mean. So the yellow is twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, I mean, it would be tough unless they were at completely opposite ends of that part of the Silasstein.
Right, yeah.
And even then, it might not work, so. Yeah, not as worried about that as I would have been otherwise. And George?
Yes, my my
I'm sorry.
George was muted, too. But Joe?
Yes, thank you. My two thoughts, one is, I'm just thinking, what's the harm with the twenty-five hundred? And although it may never happen in a lifetime, does that give us some better protection if we were to somehow rezone one of those existing business districts and maybe not have to worry as much about, you know, this becoming an issue if we do rezone somebody? And then I guess the second thought, Peter, is I see that you gave the flexibility in being able to increase the height and density and just wondering, should we impose some kind of a cap? You know, for example, may increase it not to exceed twenty-five percent beyond what's already a ladder than just have it, you know, theoretically limitless.
So right now, it's forty, forty feet is the maximum. And the coverage, if I remember correctly, is, it was in the earlier memo. I think it's fifty, fifty percent. But so if you wanted to establish, so you're talking about a percentage rather than a number as an idea.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, and I don't know what the percentage should be, but it just, we probably want to have some kind of limit, you know, stop on that, whatever it is.
It is fifty percent.
However you do it, I just think
Thanks.
You can have some.
Peter, the parking spaces, you went to what, one hundred?
One, one space for every hundred units.
Why'd you go that?
I looked at a number of other communities and I've looked at, you know, I looked at our existing facilities and in terms of how many cars are typically parked there. I think, as I noted at the last meeting, the Olson Road facility, when I looked at it, I think there was one vehicle in there. The one at the north end of the Silasstein Highway, there were four or five. I think that facility has either six or seven hundred units, so that just seems to make sense. These are not, if you've got two or three tenants at the site at any one time, that's, that tends to be kind of a big number. So I didn't want to require an overly high number of parking spaces, given this day and age where some towns are getting rid of their parking requirements altogether. So, yeah, based on my research and industry standards, that's a, that's a reasonable number. We also have a one space for every two hundred and fifty square feet of office. Plus, if it's mixed use, then there would be additional parking to satisfy the other users as well. So I think, given all of that, it's, it's a reasonable, reasonable number.
Okay, acceptable. You also should have received a supplemental letter from Mark Trahan in a separate email from your packet, and I believe Mark is with us again tonight if he wants to speak to any of that correspondence.
Yeah, do you want to mark?
I'm usually a man of many words. I'm a man of few words tonight. Peter, you're doing a wonderful job.
Okay. Tom and George, I think, had questions. We'll go in that order if you still do.
Um, yeah, the, this is Tom talking. With regards to the section that, I guess it's subsection E of the new section five twelve, which is number three or item number three in your memo, where you reduce the, the location requirements of fif- down to fifteen hundred feet. I kind of echo the concern that Joe and others had mentioned about the reduction below the twenty-five hundred foot amount, but your explanation does seem reasonable. You know, if, if there's no net effect of going down to fifteen hundred feet, I don't have objections to that. My prefer- preferences would still be in the twenty-five hundred foot arena. The other thing I want to comment on is the, the subsection above that, which is D, which provides the commission some flexibility to modify. And I applaud that section because that, that does allow the commission to, you know, to, to vary to some extent the application of the regulations to fit some particular application that where it may be reasonable to do such modifications. My sense is, and, and I guess I'm asking you to correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong in this, but if that subsection would be invoked, that is, the subsection that allows the commission to modify the multi-story and mixed-use requirements, if that subsection is invoked at any future hearing, my sense is that, that, that the commission must make the findings in one, two, and three, D one and D two, D three explicit before it can agree to modifications. Is that correct?
Yes, whenever we have a section that, you know, requires findings, that all should be well documented on the record and discussed as part of the approval process that you have made those three findings. And therefore, your project is qualified to grant the modification.
Okay, that, that's, that was my sense of, of the, of the status of that, so thank you for clarifying. That completes my questions.
Okay, thank you. George, did you have something?
Yes, I did. I want to be sure that our existing facilities won't be hampered by the new regulations. In other words, the exemptions and so forth that you just talked about, for example, it can accommodate a, an improvement or revisions or a significant upgrading of our existing facilities. Is that correct?
George, section, I guess it's in page four of the, of the packet. Subsection Q is the section that would cover our existing facilities. And if they wanted to expand or if they wanted to add some new buildings on site, the commission, there's specific language in here that the expansion or new construction would be allowed under a non-conforming provision. So there is language in there that would accommodate and allow those facilities to expand and or add some buildings if they ever wanted to do that.
And they wouldn't have to meet a lot of these requirements in doing so. Okay.
Yep, okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the commission have questions? If not, it is a continued public hearing, so I'll invite any members of the public who want to comment on the application to do so at this point.
Yes, good evening. This is A.J. Finaro. How are you all? Two weeks ago, I listened very attentively, I think, anyway, to what the discussion was, and I thought it was very healthy. And I thank Peter and Mark for putting together these proposals. But I will have to say, though, and I am the owner of one thousand Silasstein, as you know. When I read the second draft of these proposed regulations, they really don't seem to me to be consistent with what I at least heard in the first discussions that the commissioners all had. And I'll be very specific, and one of you all said that let's not let the great get in the way of the good. And I thought that was a tremendous comment to make, considering this site, my site, has been vacant for such a long period of time. And while I've made accommodations and tried to work with the town extensively over the years, every single non-self-storage transaction that has been proposed to me has fallen apart. And so a year ago, just before this moratorium was put in place, just by way of review, this property was put under contract by me, and we were going to close on a self-storage. It just seems like everybody wants to do self-storage. It seems like this site is designed for self-storage. And we're trying to force the market perhaps to do something that it really doesn't want to be. And I have to ask the question, and it came up in the last conversations, the last meeting that you all had. And I think it was talked about, if somebody brought a proposal that was non-mixed use, for example, one of the illustrations that was in the original presentation included a Milford, Connecticut site. If somebody brought a proposal that had that Milford, Connecticut site or something similar to a redesign, somewhat to that, that did not have self, excuse me, did not have mixed use, all right? And it's going to be a project, a seven, eight million dollar project, and add tremendous value to the community, would you say no? Because under these proposals, having mixed use to be defined as part of, right in the definition of self-storage as proposed, is saying it's mixed use. And so I just want to make sure I understand, because I thought I understood last time, the discussion was very healthy with regard to entertaining mixed use as to a possible incentive to something above and beyond, but not such that it would require mixed use and it would prohibit somebody proposing something that did not have mixed use to it. I can tell you that fifty percent requirement is totally impractical, and you're saying that that's not going to be a self-storage facility. The second comment I have, so that's generally with regard to mixed use. The second I have is, while I also commend the recommendations last time with respect to having some form of exemption with respect to adaptive reuse, I have to admit, though, when I read section D and it says one, two, and three, and it was confirmed on the call tonight that these requirements are mandated before anything can be considered. When I read D, it says the commission may, it said may, it doesn't say these are not part, these regulations that are proposed are not going to apply. It said the commission may modify the multi-story and the mixed-use requirements. And if these things are applied, first of all, it says market demand. Well, certainly, nobody who's going to invest seven million dollars is going to do this without a market demand and knowing what the, what the facility is going to require. And so I'm not sure why you need that, because I think somebody putting up their own money is going to make, going to make that decision. Secondly, and number two, and this is, this one is the most kind of surprising to me, where it says site and or building conditions make the site unsuitable or infeasible for other permitted uses in the zone. Well, you can drive a truck through that, and my site did have trucks driving through that. And so I just don't see any way that gives any teeth to this possible may-modify provision of this. Because you can put a lot of things on that site and say that it's in suitable. But this is the highest and best use, it appears, based upon the empirical data that's shown in the market. The market says this wants to be self-storage, and we're more than willing to entertain anybody else that has an interest in this. But unfortunately, it seems like the town has a very big concern about self-storage. And I guess at least they did a year ago, but now they've gotten over that because Peter did a great job taking photographs around the state and showing what self-storage does look like. And one of those, the Milford one, which is very appealing, did not have mixed use. So my question really is, you know, why are we entertaining in saying mixed use has to be mandated and put this in the proposed regulations? And certainly, the exemption, and I appreciate the consideration for the adaptive reuse, but I don't see putting these constraints, that these criteria say you can't have anything else, that's, it has to be unsuitable for anything else and infeasible. We're just wasting our time here, and I'm, I'm wasting my time. And I can tell you that this property, as you know, has been vacant for a very long period of time. All right, you know, if you add it up and I did the quick math, it's costing the town five hundred dollars a day, fifteen thousand dollars a month. And you can do the math over how many years this has cost, okay? Potentially, this could be a seven, eight million dollar site. It can definitely use for self-storage. There's been no question about the demand. And we're going back and forth, you know, it didn't take a year, I don't know why it did, but it shouldn't have taken a year to figure out that self-storage is not orange doors anymore. And so I don't know why we just keep going back and forth with these proposals. Let the market be what it should be, and then we should have some type of architectural review, and that's fine. Nobody wants to put anything that's not aesthetically pleasing, that doesn't fit along with the community, that doesn't do well for what's visually in front, okay? But to put these arbitrary provisions requiring mixed use, requiring fifty percent, saying that nothing else is suitable, okay? This is totally impractical. It's trying to make a property be what it, you know, what it doesn't want to be, at least in my case. And I think it's costing not only me a specific amount of money, all right? I had tremendous hardship because I had something that was under contract. And, you know, even though I was cooperating over many, many years with the town to be able to do something else, okay? Even helping Paul Montanari get elected again. And, but unfortunately, now I'm slapped with something at the last hour when I put something in contract to let a property be what it wants to be. And I don't think it's fair. It's not fair to me, and it's not fair to the town either. I paid over a million dollars in taxes on this property, okay? But if I paid a million dollars, I can tell you the town lost over three million dollars. And you're losing five hundred dollars a day with this. And so, you know, I think, just to sum it up, I think, you know, the gentleman commented about, don't let the great get it away with the good. I'm going to echo that in spake. And so I don't really know why you're doing this. You know, I can sit and let this property of mine, you know, be vacant for another ten or twenty years or whatever, but that's not helping anybody. It's not helping me, and it's not helping the town. So I really would encourage you all to maybe go back, look at the conversations that you had before, because I thought you were right on target when a lot of you all were asking, why should why should we mandate this? And don't let the great get in the way of the good. You know, if you want to have an architectural review, I'd be a hundred percent supportive of it. And let that, let that, you know, make sure it fits the community and so forth and aesthetically pleasing, okay? But to require these arbitrary provisions, you, you're just asking trouble, and you're asking for my site just to sit there for an extended period of time. So I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has, anything about the market, anything about, you know, what you've had, any, anything else about self-storage. I know more than I ever thought I would ever need to about self-storage. But I can tell you, my company, you know, we've done billions of dollars in financing all around the country. You know, we're in the Brookby Financial, you can see over my shoulder, but my company, I set twenty-eight years ago. And we've put billions and billions of dollars into communities. If somebody wants to do something else with this site and there's a personal interest, all right, then maybe I sell to them, okay? If Mark or Peter, whoever have an interest in this, want to do something else, I'll sell to them. I may even finance that. But right now, we have something that wants to be what it should be. And I'm really getting to the point, the end of my rope, you know, with the, trying to be patient here with everybody. So I'd open up to questions. Anybody has any questions for me? Thank you very much for listening.
Hi, this is
Yes, I am.
Go ahead, Dave.
Rich, my only comment, I'm looking at three D, unless I misunderstand it, that's pretty much was written for you. Three D, it says, we may modify, which means we can say we don't need mixed use on that property. So I'm not sure what your concern is. Unless I'm missing something, I think three D was written for you.
Yes, you are missing something, with all due respect. It says, mission may modify.
May, right.
Okay, so that's a possibility, may, and that also means may not. The second Can I finish, please? May I finish, please? Okay, because I am the only one on this call tonight that has a financial interest here, okay? I'm the only one on this call tonight. I challenge all of you with respect to how much you've paid in taxes. I've paid over a million dollars in taxes here. So I'm trying to be patient, all right? But this property was taken, this, this sale was swiped away from me, okay? And I had this property sold. So I think, having waited over a year, you know, without speaking up more aggressively, I think I deserve some accommodation for that. The point number two, where it says, site and or building conditions make the site unsuitable or infeasible for other permitted uses in the zone. You can drive a truck through that, okay? And so really, what is the intent? Is this, you know, is this a wolf?
I thought that was, may I interrupt? That was in response, I believe, to your statement last time that the nature of the building and its layout was such that it was cost exorbitant and not feasible to convert it to self-storage as we had it written at that point. I think that was meant to be responsive to that, and, and that, I believe that language gives us the ability. If somebody can say it's going to cost ten million dollars to retrofit this building, if you apply the reg literally, and that makes the project no longer viable, I think that gives us the ability to say, we'll waive it.
That, that is not what this says. It says that the commission needs to make a decision as to whether the site and or building conditions make the site unsuitable or infeasible for other permitted uses in the zone. What it's saying is that there's no other permitted use in the zone that's suitable for this site.
I assume your argument would be despite years of attempting to get all kinds of uses, this is the only one that is viable. And I guess my reading of that is the financial, again, the cost of Again, the cost of retrofitting the building you were saying is cost prohibitive so that the self-storage. The one appropriate use can no longer work. So to me.
What you're missing, what you're missing in this is that there could be another suitable use. Okay, that somebody can put there, but it's not the highest and best use. And we've argued, I've seen arguments to say highest and best use means something like a restaurant or something I want. Okay, but that's, that's a definition, okay, that appraisers use and everybody uses. But you can say that, well, we could put a car wash there or with something else. Okay, and that property then goes from being a $2 million asset to a $1 million asset. But with the way this is written. Okay, it's saying that nothing else could go there, that it's unsuitable for anything else. Well, it's never going to be unsuitable for anything else. So you might as well just throw this provision out.
It's also, may I just say, it's also saying infeasible, which to me includes some level of financial consideration, but beyond that.
But it, but it doesn't say that in who's making that assessment. And who makes that determination?
Don't forget.
The commission make that determination or does the owner make that determination?
The, the commission, I think that you have to, don't lose sight of the fact that this use is a special permit use, which by definition. Means it's all subject to the commission and finding that any specific proposal. Is appropriate for the location where it's being proposed. This is not. An as of right use, it's not a site plan review only use. So there's a certain measure of discretion and analysis that the commission has to put on every application for this use.
Understood, but I can also say that in my conversations with all the powers that be with former mayors and everybody else that. AJ, if you want to put self-storage, you want something, we're not going to stand in your way. All right, and but, and I'm doing everything in my power to be so-called good citizen and cooperate and try to find somebody else and somebody else that you guys had. Whatever. And I never understand why there's such an adversity to self-storage. And in fact, when I went to one of the subcommittee meetings that was held. All right, I thought it was going to be like 12 against one. And what I found was just the opposite. Okay, is that people were asking, well, why does it have to be these restrictions and why do we not want self-storage and all that? And the, and the onus was put on Peter and Mark to come up with explanations as to why, why there's such a concern for self-storage. And then apparently that's been abated because Peter did a great job traveling all around the state and figuring out that self-storage is not an eyesore. And it is a good, good use of, of, of spaces. And then for some reason, then we came back to say, well, let's just go with mixed use. And then that's where it came. But, but the question is, if you had a proposal that somebody wanted to put. A self-store facility that was aesthetically pleasing, passed an architectural review, and it was a $7 million project. But it did not require, did not have mixed use, would you say no?
I think the whole purpose of D is to allow us to say yes.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was my interpretation is that D allows us to have this discussion during a meeting. And say, you know what, like, this is, this is good, this is an appropriate use of this site like so. Cause that's, that's kind of the nature of these meetings.
No, but what, I, I, I get that. What I'm, my question, however, was not just with adaptive reuse. My question was if somebody comes in and says. I want to put up a new facility, $7 million facility. But I don't want to do mixed use. I'm not a mixed use person. I'm not a mixed use developer. I am a self-stores developer. You tell me what you want the facade to look like, I'll make it the most beautiful facade. Okay, in the front of the, in front of the building. Okay, we're next to a Goodyear. Okay, there were garage doors, by the way. And, but I'll make it look however you want it to look. All right, but I don't want to do mixed use. I'm not an apartment guy. I'm not whatever. Okay. I want to build a self-storage. And somebody came to you and it was aesthetically pleasing, and it was a $7 million project that did not have mixed juice. Would you say no?
I guess the question then goes back to Peter whether. D should be limited to adaptive reuse of existing buildings or could it be new construction?
So as written, it would have to add some language about new construction. And you guys would have to have that conversation if you think that's, uh, appropriate. So that revised section D. Uh, only applies as far as I was intending to the adaptive reuse of existing buildings. So there would need to be some additional.
Hey, let me throw by two cents. Why don't we just get rid of two? I wouldn't, that wouldn't bother me. Is that, is that a big deal? Get rid of two, D two.
The special permit requirement?
No, site or building conditions make the site unsuitable or unfeasible for other permitted uses of the zone. Is D two a big deal?
I think you want to have some.
Easy one. I thought that would be the easiest one to meet, given the 30 or 40. Uh, different, you know, approaches they've had for the property that at this point, I think you've come to that. Determination and there's, there's really nothing left in the scheme of things for.
But Peter, but Peter, you're missing, I'm sorry to interrupt gentlemen, but you're, you're missing the point with regard to. I could sell this property for a million dollars tomorrow. Okay, but it's not the highest and best use and I'll take a tremendous financial hardship. Okay, and the way it's written to say that this site is unsuitable or infeasible for other permitted uses. You will always find some permitted use that somebody would want other than self-storage. Okay, but I'm not willing to take a million dollar financial hardship, nor should I have. And nor would the community want to have a property or some use that's significantly less. That's the problem I have with that. So, so that I think two should be definitely struck from that. And it is a special use permit and you have a lot of control. As to what goes there and how it looks and, and all that. But I think definitely two should be stricken, stricken from that. And one, and who's determining if the, the market demand exists? You know, when you all first a year ago, uh, and Peter, you presented it and you had some of the statistics right. Okay, with regard to how many self-storage units were needed per population. But you missed one very important point. It was that you were using the population of Weathersfield. Okay, but this, you have to use a three-mile radius, but then it's going to take you into contiguous communities here. And so the man is definitely there. But what happens if we go back and then we do a similar type of market demand analysis that you did previously, which was inaccurate? Okay, and now, you know, okay, and then that throws that out too. I mean, so nobody's going to put in significant amount of dollars. Without knowing and studying and knowing that the market is demands it. Why would they do that? I, I think we're trying to be real estate developers in all due respect.
Well, actually, to tell you the truth, the person that would could do that is the guy maybe. 400 yards down the street from you and says, geez, I'm going to put. 10 self-storage units in the back of my building just to make a little cash on the side. Do we want that or not? I, I don't know. You, again, you're a special situation. What about the guy 100 yards down from you? What if a guy comes next week that says 100 yards down from you says, I'm going to put these in and. You know, that's what, again, three D was trying to, I think Peter was trying to make that for you. And the guy, I wouldn't have any problem getting rid of two. I'll be honest, I wouldn't have any problem getting rid of one. Just roll three into the one paragraph. I'll be honest, myself, but.
Well, I think that makes the entire regulation useless.
No, you still have, uh, mixed use requirements. It's just that we may modify it.
We can waive if the buildings are nice?
I think you could, right? I don't know.
No, I mean, what's the point of having a regulation then?
You should have an architectural review. That's what many, many towns and cities do around the country. They have an architectural review. And to see, I mean, you have this special New England use permit, right? And you can make a decision. Does it fit or doesn't it?
Isn't part, part one and two, like, that's just like general discussion that we have on so many permits that come ahead of us. Like, we talk about the market demand and we talk about is this location suitable for X, Y, or Z business? So I mean, like, like, that's the whole crux of a lot of the conversations that we have for many.
I, 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 I get that, Ryan, but that's not what this is saying. It's not saying.
I'm just saying I don't want to get rid of the, like, one and two, because those are just major pieces.
I know, but what you're saying and what you're commenting on, okay, is not how I'm reading this, and I don't think how it's intended to be read. It's not asking, is that site suitable for self-storage? Because that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about is that this exception, this may modify exception to the proposed new regulations. Is only a possible exception if this site is not suitable for anything else. It's just the opposite of what you're saying. It's the trigger by which this exception could possibly be considered, this may modify exception. Okay, what it's saying is, is saying the inverse. It's saying that this exception doesn't kick in unless this site can't be used for anything else. And this site can always be used for something else. I could sell this high, I could sell this tomorrow for a million dollars or a million, two or a million, three. I could sell this, literally, within a week, I could have this sold. Okay, and there's going to be something else for there. Okay, that's why this doesn't work. That's why two doesn't work. It's not saying, do we want to have self-storage? It's saying that in order to trigger this. Exception, and I don't even know if it's an exception because it says may modify. This is may, to me, may means also may not. It doesn't say that, it should say that these, you know, these, uh, mixed use. I don't even think there should be a mixed use requirement. You know my feeling on that. And the self-storage, I don't think the, the multi-story should have anything to do with the existing properties at all. So I don't think you should say may, it should be not applicable. And I don't think number two works. I know it doesn't work. Cause you could drive a truck through it. And what I'm concerned about is that, that the drafting of these regulations. Okay, that this is really a smokescreen and maybe it isn't. Okay, but that's what I'm concerned about is that the intent and the good intent of the commission. Trying to do something to be accommodative. But that this is actually a smokescreen because there's always going to be something that's unsuitable, that, that this site could be suitable for. So I'm never going to be, can never prove number two. Number two will never happen. You could always, if you wanted to, find something that will violate number two and thus make number D inoperable. And I don't know why, I don't know why mixed use is such a big thing. Why does it have to be mixed use? I know, I, I would like to propose the question again. If somebody had a new development. They were going to do a $7 million self-storage, new construction, but it did not have mixed use. Would you approve it?
AJ, uh, this is Mark Trigian, um, and we'll let the commission, um, think about that for a moment. I think at the crux here is that we're ruling in and you are ruling out. The idea of mixed use with a storage facility. As you know, the initial intent on the moratorium was to potentially rule out self-storage. And after listening to you, and as you've said, taking into some thoughtful consideration. We reviewed other things that were happening, uh, project-wise in this area and nationally. And came back and found a way to rule in. Storage facility in its highest and best use with, which would include mixed use. And as you know, um, you and I and Peter had a conversation several months ago with a company that. Was considering, that was a developer of, of a storage and also was interested in two other pad sites. On that spot incorporating a restaurant and another business, completely fulfilling what we were talking, what we're talking about here. Um, that was a, an item that you and I discussed in Peter with the actual developer. So no one is ruling out storage here. What we're saying is for us to rule storage in. We feel the highest and best use would incorporate mixed use on that site. And again, i- if you look around the country, that is the hottest craze right now with regards to self-storage. And you could look at the periodicals that come out. And I provided several of these to the members of the commission, articles that have come out just over the last six months. That are talking, that is the wave of the future for self-storage. So what we're trying to do is to accommodate your needs on that property. If you feel as though over the 25 years that you've owned the property. Um, that you've had a hardship there, and I know you've had 25 or 30 deals go through, uh, fall through. I'm not sure what the symptoms are and why all those deals are falling through. But the idea is we're ruling in storage with mixed use. We're not ruling it out, we're ruling it in. And we're trying to find a way to help accommodate what you're feeling. And what we feel is the best, highest and best use for the property there at 1,000 Sal steam. And that's the gist of this. There's, I, I think it's a regretful thing to say when it's a smokescreen. There's no smokescreen here. Initially, our intent was to rule out self-storage on, on any properties in Weathersfield. But we have been very flexible and try to be very patient with you as well. As we've tried to understand why you decided not to market the product, uh, your project or your parcel nationally. To get people from Georgia or Chicago or, or Moderna, California or whatnot that are in this particular arena of building these mixed use storage facilities. Get that site out in the public so you can get those phone calls and we're hoping that those things come. So, and just to recap, I think we're, we're finding a way to help rule in storage, not rule out storage.
Well, Mark, you know, look, I, we can go around and run on this, but it hasn't been 25 or 30 offers. Uh, we've had half a dozen proposals that potentially were serious on this. Uh, the property is marketed nationally, so I'm not sure where you're getting your, your data from. But it, my interpretation of what, my interpretation of what you said. Is basically that I should be happy that what was once permitted and then subsequently taken away. And now given back as only partial of what was originally, uh, permitted. That I should be pleased that I'm left with half of what I had before this whole process began. Okay, because self-storage was not, was not prohibited. And so by taking it away, I lost everything and now you want to bring back half of it potentially. So, I mean, let's just call it what it is. And I'll be happy to sell it to you if you want to buy it. Maybe I'll finance you. But, you know. To put so many restrictions, I, I really would love to hear if the commission would entertain somebody building a new facility there that did not have mixed use. And it was a $7 million facility. What would the commission do? That's a fair question.
Was it always, it was, the mixed use wasn't part of it as of when? Like, when, when was it okay to be like full just storage facility? Like, what was that date?
Moratorium. Yeah, right before the moratorium.
Like, what, what was that date?
Oh, a year ago.
So before that, before that, it was full, like you, you could be like just nothing but storage?
You could do mixed use. Uh, we didn't prohibit that. For example, the, um. Cheap, cheap storage facility up on the, uh, Berlin Turpike, not a shining example of mixed use because it has a pawn shop. And then it has, uh, the old style garage door, uh, self-storage units. But that is a, is a mixed use because it has commercial as well as self-storage. So, uh, self, uh, mixed use was permitted, uh, previously, although it didn't specifically say that. But by, uh, Previous Planning and zoning commission act, and you did allow, uh, mixed, mixed use up there. So we have one of our, one of our three projects in town is mixed use.
But mixed use was never required. Mixed use was never required prior to the moratorium, which still wasn't. But this is the first proposal of mixed use being required.
Right, this is, this is the first time that something fell through because potentially of the, of the mixed use.
Correct.
Prior to that, it was. Deals.
Correct. Just so that we don't get. Completely out of hand, is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak on this application? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Peter, when does the moratorium expire?
Uh, December five or six. So you have a meeting on December one. So we have one more meeting before the, um, moratorium expires.
I have a question, a quick question anyway. Peter, with all the work that you've given us. I've gone down the, uh. Fairfield County into New London County and seen some enhancements. In some of these storage facilities. I've looked at the trade journals that Mark gave us and some of the other detail. Having been in the appraisal profession for over 40, 43 years. AJ, if this was saying that the board or commission had the discretion to look at that 50%, maybe 30% or 20%, I'm asking this question because when you go to the Berlin Turnpike and you look at a rare lot with a rare storage facility that doesn't have the frontage, doesn't have the exposure, doesn't have the highest and best use potential for your site, would it, would it be something that we would look at differently if we had some latitude on that 50% ratio? Maybe with the frontage having a different density or the different purpose? Because I'd be surprised if the other three, three facilities aren't before us in the next year asking for enhancements. What I'm seeing in Darien, Stanford, Norwalk are facilities that have some residential use, to be honest with you. There's a couple of them that have put apartments in for the management team to take care of those dysfunctional lots where they put storage facilities on that have a lot of visibility, a lot of exposure to I-95, to the Boston Post Road. They've been really plums for some of the apartment dwellers that are intensely occupying some of the facilities, especially with people leaving New York coming into Connecticut. Could you answer that question? And might it be more marketable by having this promoting a mixed-use facility at some discretion for the board?
That, that's an excellent question. And to my knowledge, look, I'm not a developer, but I do have the reliability of those who are developers who are interested in this site. And so I had an open mind, right? I took the regulations as proposed and I passed them out. I emailed them to a few of the developers. And it was pretty harsh, the comments that I got back. You know, this is ridiculous. This is, this is not the market. And I'd be more than happy to, you know, I, I, I'm in a position to, to monetize a property I have. I'm not in a position to say it has to be this or it has to be that. I'm just going by what the market is saying, right? And, and so, and I'd be happy to share the names and, you know, and Peter and Mark, and you guys could have conversations with them directly. But it seems to me, though, that the apartments, for example, take apartments. And I think, Peter, you had one example that had apartments to it. But it was primarily an apartment building. And then it went downgrade. And they did a very creative way of taking advantage of that downgrade here and were able to put in self-storage to take advantage of that. But it was primarily an apartment. I don't know, and nobody has approached us, and this is nationally marketed. And, and it's on LoopNet, and we are getting probably, I don't know, I'd say two or three serious inquiries a week that are coming in on it.
How long have you had the property listed on LoopNet?
We took it off once the deal, once the moratorium went. Okay, and so I just thought we were wasting our time. And when this commission was meeting again to address, and Peter and I have been staying in contact, that this meeting was going to come up or the November third meeting was coming up. So about a month prior, we knew it was coming up. So then we put it back up. And, you know, and we didn't say this is only self-storage. We just put it back up. And, and so I'd be happy to share the list of people who have inquired, right? But just last week, there's a gentleman, he has a fund out of Canada. And, you know, he said, this is, this is what I want to do. And I said, look, the commission is very concerned. This was after you all met, the first time we all met. They're very concerned about aesthetics, about how it looks and how it mixes with the community. This is a, this is a prime thoroughfare. There's 23,000 cars a day going by, and it's very important. And he said, I understand 100%. I can make it look however you want it to look. They will not be, they will not be disappointed. And so, you know, I mean, I, I, I think that's part of the reason that there's been an objection, correct me if I'm wrong, to the self-storage is because of this potential appearance, even though this is, you know, we're next to a garage, we're next to a Goodyear. All right, but it would look very aesthetically pleasing. You saw one of the, somebody asked me, what was that last or asked, what was that last photo that I had on the memo that I, the response I had to the original? You can see, you know, that company had a drive-through, which is a garage store, but it was a drive-through climate control, but it looked like a Porsche showroom. You know, so there's ways to address this. And I don't, I don't argue or disagree at all if somebody was proposing building orange doors on Silas Dean. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to have that approved either. But I don't think that's what anybody's talking about. I, I think if you have the authority, which you do, to have an architectural review to see if it's somehow aesthetically pleasing and whatever the words that can come up with that make it, make you all feel comfortable, that is visually and aesthetically pleasing and consistent with the neighborhood, then that's probably all you really need. And if somebody wants to do mixed storage and mixed use and you say, all right, but I'm going to give you something else in addition if it's mixed use because for some reason we may want mixed use, then maybe they'll do it, maybe they won't. I don't know.
To go back to my original question, AJ, and how long you had the property marketed? You know, I've been involved with the, with, with economic development, the N-RDA now for, I think, seven or eight years. And I think during that period of time, it's been on LoopNet for maybe a couple of months during that period of time.
And we had, Mark, we had a, a real estate agent. Unfortunately, he, he passed away from esophagus cancer. But Peter, maybe you remember, we've had some meetings with him. We were there and somebody brought us a, somebody that wanted to do out of Hartford, the Hartford, a lighting company, Connecticut Lighting or somebody. We had a meeting, right, in the town hall. And, you know, Paul, our broker, was there. I've had three different brokers over the years represent us. So it's not without trying. Why would I not want to try to get this thing, get this property sold? There's, there's, there's no, there's no incentive. There's no reason why I wouldn't want to have it sold.
I, I would agree with you. And I, I think the point you're making, AJ, and especially if you're getting two or three calls a week, you know, storage is, we're talking about storage here, but storage is, is one of dozens of things that could go on that site. And we're talking about this because the, you know, we feel as though that a storage facility with mixed use would look the best and highest use for that particular business. But I think that if, now that you've begun to aggressively market it on a national basis, I think you're going to get a lot of phone calls because
We've had it for the last two months, Mark, marketed aggressively on a national basis. Okay, you know, a- again, you know, we're saying what we think, what we think, okay? But the market is, what's the term in this? You know, look, if I had somebody, if, if all these calls were coming in and I can't wait to do mixed use, fine, but I'm not getting that. Okay, and, you know, you've been aware of this property for so long. I, I don't know if you brought me anybody that could potentially in here either.
Chairman, George Euchel here. Both of these people and this particular owner has had his say tonight. I think we hear him and we may do something with this, but this is a hearing on the application. I do have a question. What would happen if somebody came in with only residential? Or came in only with business and storage? Or actually came in with neither of those? Would we be able to accept it?
Well, I think it would depend on whether it's permitted by the regulations.
Well, this set of regulations, Mr. Chairman, would we be able to accept it?
Who would not be able to?
Came in not residential.
Right. Not residential, alone.
I'm intrigued that, AJ, you're getting any calls with the economic pandemic environment we're having. There's a lot of commercial businesses, a lot of commercial owners that are looking twice and seeing what's going to happen in the next six months or the next three to four years.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a very accurate statement. And, and we're doing projects in the millions. I have a $28 million project in Indianapolis that is outdoor retail. Everything's getting hurt across, across the nation. But I will say, though, I wouldn't use the word recession or pandemic-proof, but I would say the self-storage is recession and pandemic-resistant. And when I looked at the numbers, that there's still a high driver because there's a need for self-storage and it's not so affected by other uses. I mean, hotels, you know, are, are, forget it. We did have a hotel group that was potentially interested. But they're in a lot of hurt right now. I'm dealing with a national company that just took back about 20 hotel properties. That's really hurting. Retail is, is really hurting. And you're right, 100%. Everybody's sitting, you know, back on the sidelines. But, you know, even before this, though, I can just say there hasn't been a lot of, you know, a lot of potential here. But the self-storage, it just seemed to be somewhat resilient. And
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I guess, you know, we've heard from the owner, we've heard from Mark. Nobody else in the public wishes to comment. I guess we're kind of at a point where we have to do one of limited number of things. One, you know, i- if we are comfortable with the presentation that Peter has put together, you know, perhaps with a couple minor amendments, we can close the hearing and approve it. If we don't like what has been presented to us, we either continue it to the next time and see if we get something better or deny it. If we are going to, you know, send it back or continue it, I think we need to be very specific about what it is that we're looking for because, you know, time is tight in terms of the expiration of the moratorium. And it's not really fair to anybody to, to just keep kicking that can down the road while we contemplate this. You know, I guess the, the first option of, you know, taking what has been presented, maybe with some minor changes and approving it, I guess one of the corollaries or caveats on that could be that if, you know, someone were to come in with a $7 million project that was entirely self-storage and a new building, you know, that that project could come in with a text change proposal that was designed to do more than what 3D does to allow us to make that happen because, you know, frankly, as much as we want to, you know, adopt something that works, that helps preserve property values in town, you know, where, where there is a legitimate business purpose and where it's in the best interests of, you know, the town, the property owners and, and the regional economy. I, I think we've got a history of being very willing to listen and act on things that, you know, move the town forward. So I'm not, I'm not trying to push the commission in any one direction or another. I'm just trying to push us into doing something other than staring at each other in little boxes.
I think you're right, Mr. Chairman. I understand completely what you're saying. We have been flexible at making a change. And that can happen in the future. And I wouldn't want any ZBA to come in and say, hey, you have that ability. And once in a while, they do things that they're not supposed to be doing and try to make a change on this that may accommodate it. So I think we can move on. We've heard quite a bit at this hearing about what we should be doing and we can discuss it further.
Okay. Anyone else have any thoughts on how we should proceed?
I guess I, I think I'm comfortable proceeding tonight, but I guess just to echo Rich, what you said a little bit earlier, if, if the consensus is that we want to retool something that has to be done, you know, can't be done on the fly tonight, I just think we should be very careful considering the remaining timing because if we were to get to the next meeting on December 1st and either deny the proposal or not be comfortable voting on it and the moratorium expires, then, you know, we're, it's basically just back to where it was. And everything we've done for all these months is kind of out the window. So I guess what I'm really saying is if we're not going to act tonight, if we're not comfortable acting tonight, I think we might want to consider some very brief extension, because I know that has to be noticed as a public hearing and we could probably do that together with the continued public hearing on this and just have it as a safety valve. Plus, if we act on December 1st, I'm not sure if there's enough time for Peter to publish in the newspaper and have the effective date all occur before December 4th. So we ought to consider that as well.
Well, under the executive orders, you can publish on the website. So you can do that the next day.
Okay. But, but I'm, I, I think I've heard enough to try to address things tonight if other people are comfortable.
Anyone else have thoughts?
Can I ask again why the 50% was in there, Mark and Peter? Why not 30%?
We, we did research other communities. I can't, you know, specifically recall which one, but we looked at a whole bunch of different samples from all over the place and we tried to apply them specifically, not to, not to AJ's property, but to a typical, so a typical self-storage facility these days is about the 90,000 or 100,000 square foot type of project. So if you apply the 50% ground floor requirement, so, for example, the one up on, off of, off of the Berlin Turnpike and Arrow Road is, was 90,000 on three levels. So it was a 30,000 square foot first floor pad. So the 50% rule there would be 15,000 square feet of commercial or residential, just to put it in perspective. On the, in the multi-building concept with the 25% of the total floor area, if you go 25% of 100,000, that's 25,000 square feet. So it, it just puts those numbers in perspective. So we didn't just necessarily pull them out of the air. But there are other examples where they use those numbers and we felt, given the math that we did in these examples, it, it would work. And actually, when Mark indicated that there was a proposal or, or an idea for this site for 1,000 Silas Dean Highway that had two pad sites, the 25,000 square foot number actually works.
So we spent some time working in Newington. It'd be a whole different discussion if we're talking Castella Road, Stan Road or some of the other industrial parks there and stuff. But again, we're not focused on one property, looking for the benefit of it all. Mr. Chairman, I respect what you said about the text amendments that we might be listening to in the future. So I'd like to float the boat and move this thing along.
Okay.
Tom? Tom, did you have something to say? Your box lit up.
Oh, no. I'm, I'm, I guess I would just echo what I seem to hear other members of the commission indicating. I basically find the, the proposal as submitted reasonable. There could be some, some potential tweaking of perhaps a couple of spots. But, you know, from my standpoint, I'm prepared to act tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else?
This is David Drake. Just add my thought process of this thing. Based on these, these, this documentation, we can only do two facilities on Silas Dean Highway in the whole town. That's all you're going to be able to do, two of them. And if 1,000 comes in with a seven, eight million dollar deal that's not mixed use, it seems to me 3D takes care of that. I, again, I, I'm happy with the whole write-up. I, I would think 3D takes care of this whole issue. We need to cover ourselves. Uh, we need to cover ourselves for the guy 100 yards north of him doing something smaller. But I, I, I just don't, I think we're covered. We're allowing two to come in on Silas and Highway. And if he comes in with a big deal that makes sense, it's attractive, 3D takes care of it. So I, I think, I think we're good, but, you know.
Okay, thanks, Dave. All right. Anything else? We seem to be heading toward closing the public hearing. Is there anything else before we do that? There are motions to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing, Mr. Chairman George.
Okay. Second?
Second, yeah.
All right. Uh, motion by George, second by Mike. Any discussion? Uh, if not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Joe, were you opposed to closing the hearing? Okay.
No, I was a, I was an aye.
Okay. You're on tape delay. Right. Um, in light of that, does someone want to make a motion to, uh, start discussion here?
Yes, for purposes of discussion, I would move that we approve the proposed amendments as written subject to, to one, um, modification that I would propose, which is to impose some type of limit on the, uh, sort of bonus height and density that, uh, can be allowed for a mixed-use development, just for discussion purposes. I'm gonna suggest, uh, 10 or 20%. How about 10% just to get something out there? Um, and then, uh, I'm also gonna propose, I guess, that we modify the 1,500 to, to 2,500 in terms of separation distance.
Okay, so Joe made a motion to approve the draft regulations with the change that the, uh, 1,500 feet separation district, distance be uh, changed back to 2,500 and that item P on the last page four, uh, that the increase in building coverage and building heights be restricted to an increase of 10% over what is ordinarily required by the regulations. Is there a second? Uh, Mike, we are a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, good. Okay. Yeah, Joe, I, I agree with you on P. That was, that was a little, um, too open-ended and I didn't, that a waiver that, that was that open-ended and indefinite really would withstand scrutiny.
Um, thanks. I'm, I'm open, you know, if anybody has thoughts, whether it should be something other than, than 10%.
Why, Joe, did you want to expand through what, 2,500 distance?
I, I guess, uh, it doesn't seem to me, you know, that it, that it harms anything. And I guess it's just out of concern that, uh, you know, that, that we, that we might, you know, I'm just not 100% confident that the 1,500 is as, uh, achieves the same effect as the 2,500. So I guess my thought is why, uh, you know, if it's not gonna cause any harm, why not just go with the higher figure? And as I said before, if somebody petitions to change a zone of one of these intervening properties to match an adjacent zone, that might affect the measurement.
We, we could change it back in the future, right? If necessary or something like that. Uh, this also would preclude too many of these sites in the town by expanding to 2,500 too. So, I don't know. Okay, I hear you. Thank you.
Can I add my thoughts on the 2,500? My original thought was the 2,500 also. But considering that, you could probably only put two inside the highway, no matter what you do, 1,500, 2,500. The 1,500 does give you a little bit more flexibility on what spots down that street. Considering we got one right at the north end, then you gotta go 2,500 feet south, a half mile. And this precludes anything between those two buildings that you could do this with. So it does limit you.
But I think what Joe is saying is that it doesn't make a difference in how many potential.
No, it does make a difference because between that north, north one and a half mile down, you can't put anything. Can't do it. But, but no matter what you do, you can only do two. Again, maybe it's a stretch with three if you get one at the very end. But, uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm good with the 2,500, to be honest with you. But just saying, my, my thought is 500 does give you more flexibility on what site, what sites could actually do that. Either way, you're only gonna get two.
Right.
Yeah. That's.
I'll throw another what if. If a guy next week comes in and comes down 2,500 feet south on Silas the Highway and says he wants to do it, I think he just took the 1,000 out. Can't do it. On the Silas the Highway.
The north end of the Silas the Highway?
Well, you gotta go 20, you're on the north end of Silas the Highway. If you come back down a half mile and you put, some guy pops one in there with 10 units in his backyard, no, you shake your head, that wouldn't happen.
You can't do it. The zoning up there does not have either the RC or the BP. So you don't have to really worry about the, the one on the north. Um, the 2,500 feet on the Berlin Turnpike would allow, um, one of those vacant properties close to the Rocky Hill Town Line. Um, I mean, Newington Town Line, sorry.
Oh, and make it, it'd be close enough? Okay.
2,500 feet, you, there'd still be room up there and there would be room, um, somewhere, if, if you did something at 1,000, so there would be room somewhere down at the Rocky Hill Town Line on the south end of the Silas. Those would be the two options.
Okay. Well, again, I'm, I'm good with the 2,500. I just said you get more flexibility, 1,500 wouldn't be, but that's, that's fine.
And we can always change it, Dave.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So, so the only other conversation you should have is the, uh, point that AJ made. If you had a developer who wanted to just come in and build a new building, a $7 million new building, and all he wanted to do was self-service, a self-storage, that would not be under this proposal permitted. So you should, you should just have that conversation to make sure you're okay with, with that. Or do you need to change the regulation to accommodate that?
Yeah, actually, that was the, the only other point that I was gonna make was did anyone feel that they wanted to, to do anything with D? Or do we think that that creates? You know.
Again, you're saying the new building because 3D does say existing buildings. It, it's.
Yeah, 3D is exclusive to existing, you know, retrofit of buildings. But if somebody wanted to tear something down and put up just self-storage.
Couldn't do it, yeah.
Do it right now, uh, without coming back and changing the regulations or going to the ZBA for a variance.
Well, do you think anything like adaptive reuse of existing buildings or of an underutilized site would allow a new building to go in without, you know, only in places where, you know, there is a higher and better use? Um, or do you think, you know, professionally, we should just leave it as it is? And then, you know, if someone comes in with a $7 million building, we revise the regulations to allow it?
Yeah, I wouldn't know how to write that or define underutilized. You know, that's a, uh, that's a term that I, is, um, probably subject to the eyes of the beholder. Um.
Unlike anything else in a special permit application.
Right, right. So it would probably have to be another section.
Okay.
But then you're almost undermining the entire, you know, intent of this proposal as it's written in terms of the mixed use and the multi-story buildings. So, but as you say, someone can come in if they want to do something and ask to amend the regulations.
Yeah, or if, or if, you know, property owners hear from people that we would come in and do something if the regulations allowed X, Y, or Z. You know, we can be responsive to that in a kind of a more, less rushed fashion.
Yeah, doing it that way by having someone come in and, and propose, you know, uh, a, a new section to these regulations if they are adopted or to amend these, uh, regulations. Uh, and, you know, write out in the appropriate regulatory language what they are actually proposing the regulations be is, uh, something that we've handled before. We've had a number of applications in the past where, uh, uh, people have come in, applicants have come in, uh, having prospective projects. And they've, uh, proposed the regulatory changes in order for them to, uh, make a subsequent application. And that seems to be a, a reasonable way of handling these kinds of, uh, exceptional sorts of issues.
You're right, Tom.
Yeah, I mean, and, and frankly, the, the nature of what there's a market demand for is constantly evolving. So if we tried to guess tonight what somebody wants, you know, during year five of the pandemic, we'd probably be guessing wrong.
Yeah, five of the pandemic.
Yeah, who can, who can tell what other, you know, some other pathogen is lurking out in the outland somewhere in the world that can, uh, come and strike down, uh, humanity. Remember, you know, the COVID-19 is just one of a recent series of, uh, of, of, of serious diseases that have come, uh, sort of, you know, out of the blue, so to speak, or out of the, you know, out of the jungles, uh, to strike at humanity. We've had SARS, we've had, uh.
All right, how are we, how are we doing? Is this, is this part of the discussion here? Can we just?
So we, my point is we, it's difficult to make those kinds of predictions.
All right, great.
And, uh, we, we, we need to, you know, look at things as they are and as can be reasonably predictable, given, you know, today's ability to have foresight, so.
Let's move the question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'll hang some garlic and we can move it along. Um, does anyone else have any suggestions or amendments that, that they'd like to make in addition to what we've already discussed?
I just have one, uh, Peter and Rich, I think we need to set an effective date as part of this. And, uh, I guess my question to Peter is what, what, what date should we set that gives you adequate time for all your publications and so forth, just so you don't get cut short?
I, I think Denise is, um, on, on the line here. She may know more specifically about when the next, um, legal ad opportunity is. Denise, can you chime in? I would probably pick a date, um, sometime towards the end of next week.
Yeah, don't forget next week, next week's probably everything closed on Friday, right?
Yeah, towards the end of, um, the following week then, whatever that calendar date is. Let's see here.
November 27th.
Mon- Monday, the 30th, does that work?
Yeah.
Hey, Monday, the 30th.
Let me just take a quick peek here.
Cause I think Town Hall is probably closed November 25th and 26th, the Wednesday and actually the Thursday, the 26th, and Saturday, the 27th, right? So.
And the December, a- actually, if you made it towards the, um, the end of the first week of December, it still goes under the, under the moratorium. So if you wanted to go out that far, I just don't know when the deadlines, the, the deadlines for printing a legal notice have been pushed around because of those same holidays. So, um.
And November, you mean, here?
So I, I would maybe say December, uh, December 3rd.
Well, you still can publish it on the website and have.
I guess we could do that and uncover it. So, yeah, we could do it. So then the timeline is less restricted.
Yeah. You want to say December 1st, just so you have two business days after Thanksgiving, but not push it to the brink of the expiration?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Anyone else have any comments, questions, discussion? Um, do we all understand what the motion is? All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Dave and Tom said aye. Their hands are invisible. Anybody opposed? Okay.
Oh, no, I'm not opposed.
Uh, anyone opposed?
I already had my hand up before.
George. Okay. All right. Any, anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next item is the new public hearing application, 205920Z Eleknor Hawkeye LLC, seeking a special permit in accordance with Section 52H6 of the Weatherfield zoning regulations for a contractor's storage yard at 61 Arrow Road. Is there someone here who wishes to present on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, uh, can, can everybody hear me?
Yep. Could you just please give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, absolutely. So my name is, uh, Dan DiDomenicus. Um, our main address is, uh, 1395A Talon Turnpike, Manchester, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you. All right. And tell us what you propose to do?
So we, uh, we are a utility contractor, um, for EverSource. Well, we are seeking approval for use of the special permit of contractor storage yard at 61 Arrow Road facility. Um, a little background with us is we were, we're contracted by EverSource, like I just stated. Um, so we do storm emergency work throughout, throughout the nation. Um, and Weatherfield, the 61 Arrow Road address would be our satellite location for storage of vehicles. Uh, we have an office trailer, um, material. That's where our guys would show up in the morning. It, um, effectively, we have about, I, I wrote a list here. We have a yard in Manchester, Weatherfield, Newington, East Hartford, Salem, to name a few. And these are satellite yards provide us with um, better access to the community, serving the community and a faster response in storm events. Um, or just regular repair and replacement of the electrical lines. So, uh, this, this permit and application that we're seeking approval for, 61 Arrow Road is again, a, a storage yard for our vehicles, equipment, um, to better, better serve the community in a quicker and a faster response time. Located right next to the Berlin Turnpike, it has access to kind of disperse throughout the state pretty rapidly and quickly. And, uh, we, uh, we're hoping that we can move forward with this and continue to stay at this location. And continue our working out of this area.
Okay, so you're seeking a special permit, but you were already there?
Correct, yes. We were notified that, uh, we would, this, we were notified about a month ago by the Town of Weatherfield when we applied for a temporary electric permit, um, to decommission our generator that's on site. And we were notified by the town that we need to apply for a special permit to use this, this area that we lease.
Can you go into a little detail, um, on the, assuming we're, are we asking questions yet? Sorry, did I just jump in?
Yes.
Anyway, uh, a little bit of detail in terms of the activities, um, specifically either like late at night or first thing in the morning, you are relatively close and according to the site plan, gonna be even closer to, um, some residences. And I know in the past, we've had some discussion about the, the various crossings, whatever, the tinsman and, and the like. So if we can. So if we can, if we can define your activities early in the morning, headlights through trees, noise, just, uh, just sort of lay that all out, just because it's, it's going to be part of the discussion later on.
Yes, absolutely. So, a, a normal, a regular day, seven or five days a week operation, we, we would arrive at site between 6:30, 6:00, 6:30, and we leave site by 7:00. So there's approximately, right at this time, we have six or seven guys showing up for that site, 6:00, 6:00 in the morning. Um, they'll fire the truck up, trucks up. Um, the noise in the morning would be the backup alarms if we're moving vehicles around, which is required for us to have on all our vehicles, um, in compliance with DOT. So that would be your morning and from 7:00 through, through the rest of the day, we're offsite, um, unless there might be a general foreman or another foreman doing paperwork in our, in our mobile office trailer that we have. And then to conclude the day, we would come back around 3:00. Um, same thing, your noise would be the backup alarms of our trucks, they would have a debriefing of the day, and then we'd move offsite. And now, that's a normal, normal day operation. I can't give you exact days when we might be there in the middle of the night. If there's a storm event, that's all weather depending. Um, I know the last couple of days, we had some high winds and storms and they were there a little earlier than that. Um, if we're in a hurricane or we have other, other high, high stress storm situations, we could come 1:00, 2:00 in the morning to, to get a better start on the day. But again, that is, uh, I can't really give an exact when that could be, because that's all depending on situation as the time prevails.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have, anyone else on the commission have questions for the applicant?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, George.
Uh, see, you got portable toilets out there, sir?
Yes, sir.
Why, why don't you have something a little bit more substantial in, in building? You have a, you have a building there that you have, uh, your office in, right?
Yes, correct. We have, we have, we rent, uh, Office 107R is our, is our office for a project manager and general foreman. And we, we have access to those, uh, the bathrooms in the building. And we do use the, the, the porta toilets outside for, for our workers. Um, one, to not track mud through the building and it's, it's quicker access for our work being right there, um, on site.
Are you going to do anything to improve that in the future, you think?
Uh, we do have, yeah, we do have a couple trailers, um, we've been bringing throughout the site that are, they're more of a, they look like a cargo trailer, but they're, so fitted with, uh, bathroom storage, a little more pleasing to the eye than the blue, blue storage units that, that could be put on site. Um, but outside of that, that would, um...
Okay. How about paving of that site? The existing site is paved, you know, within the regular area, but your area is not paved, why?
Um, that, I can't speak too much to that. Uh, that would be the, the owner of, of the property, uh, or the, the business park. Um, I guess we'd have to come up with that decision on to pave or not to pave. Um, I know with the equipment we have, it's, uh, having it stoned and screeded, it can easily be, um, repaired and replaced rather than, um, asphalt, um, if we were to bit damage it with the, the trucks or the poles and the trailers in the yard or the dumpsters as well.
The poles particularly, probably, yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, I hear you, but, uh, the thing is, that site has been improved dramatically. I've been around this commission so long that I remember when that was a dirt side, it had the paved part of it to the, uh, south of you. And, uh, uh, and also the fencing there amazed me going up there and seeing it today, because there was none there at one time around the whole site. So you have it around your end of the site too now, right?
Correct, we have, they, uh, they provide us with a fence, one for security, um, for our area with the amount of tools and equipment that we keep in our, our, our area to keep away or to try to have a better secure situation for our equipment. Um, but we moved in in, in May, or signed a lease in May, moved in in July, so I can't attest to too much where it happened before.
Well, you know, I know, and I'm not getting to that, I'm just saying it's an improvement. And also the neighbors and the condos to the, uh, north side are, uh, screened by that, that, uh, fencing along the north side. So I think that's important compared to the old days. Are you going to have boats, uh, stored on site, you said? Or you have one there now?
No, 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 sir. We, uh, our, our is, we just have our utility trucks, um, trailers and poles. I noticed there were some, some emails with some other pictures, but that would be in the, the other part of the business park that had nothing to do with it.
How'd you say you were electricity or plumbing?
Uh, electric contractor, so a high voltage contractor for EverSource Electric.
Yeah, no, no, I don't mean what you do.
Oh, oh.
On site, uh, your buildings. Uh, I guess it's, it's there now, or you have, in where?
We, we have a, we have a mobile office trailer there now and we, we run the generator to power that right now. So we were, if you're, are you referring to the electrical permit?
Yeah, I guess that's about what I'm getting, I think you've answered it. And then the portable toilets outside for the guys and, and your office or in the, you know, you got, you got the regular toilet. Uh, see. I think that's about it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question. Yeah, quick question, quick question on your generator, does it run all night? And what kind of decibels is it putting out, do you know?
Uh, I do not have an exact decibel rating and yes, we, we do run it through the night to power the, uh, we have, uh, some lights. Uh, depending on, sometimes we have storm work at night and we'll leave them on. Um, but I guess on a regular day, a regular 40-hour work week, we, we shut it down. Um, and I do not know the decibel rating, but part of the reason we applied for our electrical permit was to...
To get rid of that.
The generator in more of a silent operation.
Okay, I just did, I, it's located away from the residences, but according to the photograph, if that's a generator in front of the building, but does that, that would be a concern to the residents nearby?
Yes, that, that's associated as far away from the residences we can have in our area that we use.
And overall site lighting, you don't have anything on poles or anything from looking at the photographs?
No.
Yeah, so it's just, well, your, their truck lights are what lights it up at night?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Tony? Dave, can you tell us how many trucks you'll have on the site?
Uh, right now, I, I can't attest exactly what's there tonight, um, on a daily basis. There'll be six bucket trucks, uh, we have two utility pole trailers, uh, one real trailer, and that can change day to day, we're a unionized company, so if there's more work, there might be more poles and more trucks. There's less work, you'd see less trucks. Uh, during the day, you, you probably see, what you can't really see, they're usually behind the dumpster and the fence, all the employees' cars, they park along the, the fence inside our area, and then they take the bucket trucks off the day. A normal day, normal week, six, six large bucket trucks and a few trailers, maybe a couple pickup trucks, depending.
With approval, do you think that, that, uh, number of trucks might double?
Uh, most likely not, due to the fact that we have, uh, yards scattered throughout. Um, I can't attest if it, if it will or when it will. Like I said, if, if we get more work or there's more work provided by EverSource, those numbers might go up a little bit. But, uh, that's, that's been our crew size with that crew that operates, operates in that area for the past year or so.
Is it likely you'll be registering those trucks to the town of Weatherfield?
Uh, most likely not, no. Uh, all, all of our vehicles, uh, are actually leased, we lease most of them, again, because of the unionized company, the work's so fast-paced. So if the, the work's low, all we have to do is return the lease rather than, um, having the cost of the vehicle. Um, you'll, you'll probably mostly see them registered out of New Jersey, um, sometimes Indiana if they're leased. Um, but New Jersey and New York are the most common license plates you'll see. One, our main office is out of New York, and two, New Jersey is, uh, where we lease the buckets from, 90% of the time.
If they're here for 60 days, they should be registered with the tax town of, of Weatherfield. So that, that would be my recommendation. And for, uh, materials, on your, on your letter, you do reference the storage of materials. Are you talking, uh, sanding gravel type of a thing? Or what type of materials would you have there in addition to the trucks?
Uh, so materials would be, uh, wire, overhead wire for the poles and utility poles, wooden utility poles.
Okay, thank you. How often do you have poles delivered?
Um, we probably have a delivery once a month. Maybe we, uh, we store, we usually get a truckload which comes with 30 poles, which most of the work, unless broken poles, the poles are, become more of a stockpile of material to just have in emergency situations.
Okay. All right.
Would you have a problem if I make a recommendation on any approval that, uh, the owner of the site pave your area, even though you said it can damn be damaged by those poles? I still think, uh, that it should be. Uh, and then would you have, I would, I would like to be able to make a suggestion, it won't be part of the conditions of approval, uh, that you make every effort to have your staff there, uh, not be doing backup lights if possible by the way you pull in there and park at night, uh, for the early morning start-ups, because we do have residential units just beyond the fence line there.
Okay, yes.
But, uh, I, I, as far as the paving, I'd like to see it done in a couple of years, I'll probably put that as a condition. I hope he won't be too damned upset. He can always come back, come into and see us if he wants and argue with us if he wants, but...
Very nice.
Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Okay. All right, anyone else on the commission before I open it to the public? All right. Um, if not, is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this application? Mary Rom. Unmute yourself.
Wasn't sure if that was you or me. Um, yes, I'm Mary Rom, I live at 10 Tanner Crossing in the development right to the north. We don't have any problem with Eleanor Hawkeye, the vendor, the continuing problem that we have is with the owner of the property. We, the lot where they're parked right now, where, where all of this equipment is, didn't even exist a couple of years ago. And the paperwork that was submitted, um, the letter from Russell Road Properties is full of inaccuracies and, and just fiction. It talks about the north lot, um, like this lot has always been there since 1965, that's kind of what they're implying. And that's just not the case. That lot, that lot of two years ago, less than two years ago, was grass. Five years ago, it was all wooded, um, and they cut the trees down in there. So there's no longer the, um, wooded wood buffer to the north, you know, abutting our property that there was before. But more to the point, there's 172 homes in that neighborhood and, in the crossings. And we have to, the only way to get into the neighborhood and out of it is to drive up and down Russell Road. So we can see everything that's in that parking lot. And, and, um, Ms. Oracle was right, they did put fences up and, and they've made an effort at screening and everything. But they also doubled the size of the lot to the north, like that lot did not exist before. And just this summer, suddenly, there was a lot there. There's gravel in there, someone else tried to apply to park trucks three years ago, I think, um, a bunch of box trucks out in the lot. And this commission set a bunch of stipulations for approving that. And among those would have been paving the lot at a minimum. Um, they had to, uh, there was drainage, let me check my notes, sorry. Um, had to include adequate screening, and that's part of your, the town code right there, that it has to be adequately screened. We can see those bucket trucks in that gigantic trailer next to the office trailer from a mile away. And those trucks are parked at night with the buckets up in the air. And it's my understanding it has to be that way. But you can see those through the trees from the crossing side, you can see them up and down Russell Road, it's really unsightly. We, we are concerned about our property values in there too. Um, you said they would have to have paving, lighting, landscaping, drainage, um, that no vehicles could be maintained on the, maintained in the sense of no maintenance, because there was concerns about oil or gasoline spills on the property. Um, the owner at that time, apparently you, you have met with him, said that he was not going to pave the lot, but he agreed to pave the entrance area to the parking lot. The only lot that existed at that time was the one that's directly north of the 61 Arrow Building. So when you look at that gate, it's everything to the right. Where they are now on the left just didn't exist before. So I don't understand whether, you know, the zoning, this application, I, the letter that came with it from Russell Road Properties says that the rear north lot was always an open lot used and occupied for vehicle material and equipment storage since 1965, when it was first built. And then it fenced area, now occupied by Eleanor Hawkeye LLC, was as it is now, a parking lot in which contractors' equipment and vehicles were stored. That's just a flat-out lie. That lot did not exist until a couple of years ago. And I sent, um, an email today that showed Google Earth pictures of, um, satellite photos of the lot from two years ago. And you can tell the timeframe for that photo, those series of photos, because the 7-Eleven down on the corner of Arrow Road and the Berlin Turnpike is open for business with cars in the lot. And that's just in the last couple of years. And you can very clearly see that that whole area had grass on it before, that was never used for storage. There was never anything parked there, there were trees and then just an empty lot with grass cover on it. So there's a lot in the letter from Russell Road LLC that's just, it's plain and accurate. And the boat pictures that went with the other thing was just to illustrate that this owner, I mean, I know the property's changed hands again, but I think we all know it's the same guy, because it's based out of Ridgefield and it has a post office box right next to the last owner's box. So, I mean, we're obviously dealing with the same man. We've been through this back and forth several different times, I've lived here 20 years, I can't even tell you how many zoning meetings I've been to over that time, because he's always trying to get away with something and pushing the boundaries of, you know, he gets his hands slapped, then the lot gets good for a while, and then slowly there's like mission creep again, where you turn around and it's full of things that shouldn't be there. In the, in the original lot, he's got a camper in there, boat in there, there's all kinds of other things that aren't supposed to be there. The lot's not entirely paved, there's gravel there. So I mean, there, it, there's a whole series of issues. This isn't about Eleanor Hawkeye so much, or, you know, at least for me, it's, it's about the continuing non-compliance on the part of this owner. And if you say yes to him for letting them park these vehicles out there and use that lot for contractor storage when it didn't even exist before, how do you control what he does with that lot when Eleanor Hawkeye isn't there anymore? I mean, we have to live here, those bucket trucks stick way up where we can see them. You know, it, it, it's unsightly and it has something to do with our quality of life that, that, I don't know what trailer it is, it's next to the office trailer, but that thing is gigantic. You could, it's half again as tall as the office trailer and you can see all of it over the fence when you drive by. So the whole concept of, you know, screening from the road is, is ridiculous, you can see it from the road. And this letter from Russell Road, um, Properties also says that the lot, you don't have to worry about drainage on the lot, because nothing drains into the lot. I sent another photo from Russell Road, there's no storm, storm drain anywhere near that property. And the road actually does tilt toward the property, so water does drain into there. So, I mean, that was a condition last time for when you wanted him to pave the lot and he didn't. So that's it, rant over.
Okay, thanks very much. Um, does anyone else wish to speak on the application? Joan? You're mute.
Hi, I'm going to speak, I'm a resident, um, in the area at, um, 62 Tinsmith Crossing and, um, I've gotten...
Give us your name, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Joan Silverio.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and I'm at 62 Tinsmith Crossing. Um, I had gotten a, a letter from, um, I, I'm going to speak once for Carol Murphy at 7 Tinsmith Crossing. Um, she had sent, um, an email... Um, she had sent um, an email, she, she couldn't come, um, and then speak for myself, and so this is Carol, um, my name is Carol Murphy and I live at seven Tinsmith Crossing. This parking problem has gone, has been going on for years and I happen to be right adjacent to this property. Since summer, these trucks start to leave every morning at around seven AM. The noise of them backing up and arguing, there is alw- um, also a construction trailer parked there is annoying. At around three PM, they return and all summer I have to go inside from my deck because the noise is so horrendous between backing up, parking and loud shouting, this is just the utility trucks that also have the lifts going up and down. This is the largest entry into this continuous noise problem. On any given day, there are approximately thirty to fifty vehicles parked in any of their lots. I have lived here for over thirty years and it gets worse every time. In addition, these heavy vehicles are causing road issues, I now have to look at these vehicles as the line of sight keeps encroaching. They are continually cutting down trees and expanding the parking areas, so now it is ma- uh, many parking lots and keeps getting worse, not to mention louder, I strongly oppose this ongoing expansion of parking locks, this has been going on for years, but recent expansions seem to be uh, more of a problem for me. With the trees being removed, there was a property buffer, but I now have their back spotlight shining into my bedroom at night. And the recent storm has taken down two of their trees that fell into my property. Um, and just, she's seventy-two years old and recuperating from major surgery. Um, so that was Carol, and now for me, um, you know, Elekner Hawkeye says that they use this as a lay-down area yard, um, which from what I understand means that all the items are in active use on an off-site, you know, on off-site projects um, during the day, but the mobile office trailer with the electric cookups and the portable restrooms seem to be permanently on the site, they don't leave during the day, so this is being used more as a permanent storage. Um, and then Elekner Hawkeye says that there are six utility bucket parks, um, I guess there was some letter that says that there are six utility bucket trucks parked there, but in fact, um, with the storm this summer, there were probably at least twenty to thirty there. Um, so right now there, um, you know, in terms of the material that's there, there are um, telephone poles, material trailer, one wire reel trailer, material dumpster and other material, and I guess my question is what is to prevent Elekner Hawkeye from increasing these amounts? So I strenuously object um, to, to this um, encroachment on my quality of life, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on the application? Sure?
Hi, um, that's just my grandson's name, um, my name is Lynn Bruck, and I'm at fifty-eight Tinsmith Crossing. And I've lived here for about thirty years now, and I've watched over the years um, the development down the street from me at sixty-one Arrow Road change little by little, and um, the biggest change was um, recently when, when the trees were cut down that went along the fencing, I mean, when he, when the owner put up the fence, I thought, wow, that really looks terrific, you know, compared to what it looked like before. Um, but then he started to cut back the, the trees and there's no tree line abutting the property at the top of Tinsmith Crossing. And the woman that Joan just um, mentioned her, her memo is probably, you know, is, is very disturbed, and I'm sure the people along the top of that hill are all being affected by it. You know, while the property's changed hands over several years, it's still owned and operated by the same people who have this long history of non-compliance with the zoning regulations. And if the lots approve for contractor storage for this application, there's no guarantee in the future that this tenant would be storing vehicles and materials that are even more incompatible with the neighborhood. The prior conditions for the approval to use the old north lot is Mary mentioned, and the open field area that's now the new north lot were conditioned on submission of a site plan that included adequate screening, paving, landscaping and the entire area to be used. Um, a provision of draining and the assurance that smaller trucks and vehicles parked there would not be leaking oil and grass, gas, and would not make undergoing maintenance there. And then in two thousand seventeen, the owner refused to make those changes and said he'd paved that part. Um, the, the old lot was approved for passenger vehicles, not boats and campers and food trucks and other miscellaneous outside storage. It was supposed to be that if somebody rented space inside the building, they had the option to be able to utilize the back for parking their vehicles. You know, there's, there's also, it's, it's not another issue, but just the condition of Russell Road and the wear and tear of the vehicles going in and out. Um, the road itself is a mess and, and it's probably gonna continue to be that way. I mean, we have a um, a neighborhood that's been here with a hundred and seventy-two units, and I understand this gentleman needs to have profit to his bottom line, but he continually doesn't abide by the rules that your committee has set up for him. And he waits and he's very patient, and then he just kind of sneaks in something, and then we have to go back to the board again and deal with this. And I'd like to suggest regardless of what the outcome of this um, location and, and what you, uh, what you decide that, that, that area should be monitored um, to ensure that he does follow the rules and that we don't have to continually come back and have his hands slapped, and then somebody that's a, a customer of his don't end up getting what they want. The last time they had a pro- we had a problem with the fellow about three years ago, of, a fellow was in there with trucks and he claimed he had a three-year lease, which, you know, was questionable. Um, he ended up having to move someplace else because they were doing something that they weren't supposed to do. So I'm just very frustrated with the whole thing and, and we try as a um, a neighborhood to try and support each other. And I hope you really listen to what we have to say and, and take it at heart, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Azura?
Hi, good evening. One of the things that I was noticing um, back in the summer and now even, you know, more prominently is when you drive up Russell Road, all the um, all the stuff that you see now in that back lot with, you know, today I think maybe there were one or two trucks there, but normally there are quite a few more, and at night recognizing that the bucket trucks need to be up for, I guess, regulations. It just doesn't seem to be the type of vehicle, I mean, if you're having screening that, you know, we ask the owner to put around, I mean, half of this stuff is above the fence, it's up in the air. So you see all the, um, at least half of the trailer and all of these things up at night, and it's just not aesthetically pleasing. You know, when you have a car, when you have a small van or something to that effect, and it's hidden by, uh, by the fencing, you know, you're not really seeing it, so that is something that, um, I don't know, just is, is sad to see, and it's just not something that we would uh, like to see in our neighboring community. And um, um, gosh, I had another thought here. Um, and I guess going back to another comment that was said earlier, um, I had been part of some of the conversations over the last few years with some other uh, people trying to um, you know, put their business in that area. And, you know, initially thinking it would be a viable operation, but afterthought and, you know, bringing it here to the board, it was not something that, um, you know, that uh, was allowed, let's say. And ultimately, these requirements of paving, um, you know, Mr. Oikle had mentioned about paving. You know, that's been something that's been on the docket with these people for many years, and I hesitate, you know, if we say please pave it in the next few years, I guess I'll bet you a nickel that it won't get done. Um, because we've been after them to do that for many years and it just hasn't, so, you know, I don't know. Um, I guess I'll just say that um, it's a concern for me to have this company right next door to a, a residential community, thank you.
Thank you, before you go, could you please give us your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Lorraine Zera, Z E R A, and I'm at nineteen Otter Crossing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yep, does anyone else to speak? Anyone else?
Uh, there's me, Karen Malinfons.
Okay, yep.
I'm at eighty-one Schoolhouse Crossing, and I'm here to speak against the special um, permit. Um, because I do have concerns about um, their proposal for, um, it says in their letter that they want to use a mobile office trailer for storm response crews. And I know they're saying that they're only gonna have six trailers, but I mean, what does happen when there is a storm, I mean, what is that gonna create for our neighborhood and all the, and it, is it gonna bring a lot more trucks, a lot more materials, a lot more men, and a lot of disruption to a residential neighborhood? Um, where that lot butts up against all those, um, the, the top of Tinsmith there. Um, and I do agree, and with my other uh, members of the community, it is quite an eyesore driving down Russell to go to your home to see all these bucket trucks parked there. Even the six that I've seen, I haven't seen the, the ten or, or plus there, but even the six with their big, their mobile trailer. Um, and the fact that they do have a mobile trailer out there, uh, makes me wonder like how much uh, more foot traffic um, or other business would be brought in, since they have such as a huge mobile office out on the parking lot versus um, the office space that they have in the building. That's pretty much all I have on, um, I think. Just going over my notes real quick, um, those are really all my concerns I have and along with um, my other uh, community members, I've, you know, go along with a lot of their concerns also, uh, that, that the noise that they're gonna make and the uh, damage to the road, and that the tenant hasn't um, been doing any of the things that he was, that, excuse me, not the tenant, the, the landlord of the property. Um, we've had recurring issues of with them, with him not following some of the planning and zoning recommendations like the paving and things like that. Um, and that's it, again, with that Karen Malinfons from eighty-one Schoolhouse Crossing.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Yes, um, Martha Arnold.
Okay.
I'm at thirty-three Tanner Crossing, uh, and I've been at the crossings for a little bit over nine years now, and you know, in that time I have seen, you know, these changes on the sixty-one Arrow Road property and they haven't been for the best, and you know, I lived in New York City for thirty-one years, so I know all about noise and traffic and trucks and uh, you know, I moved to Weathersfield for peace and quiet, and I'm hoping, you know, to continue that i- in the crossings, and I just want to reiterate are the concerns of my fellow residents that, you know, there is a quality of life issue here. You know, we've, we have a wonderful neighborhood, um, we look out for one another and uh, you know, we're concerned about property values, uh, the property is an eyesore, you know, going to and coming from the crossings, um, not to mention, you know, the other quality of life issues that have already been discussed. So, um, you know, I, I appreciate you keeping the residents in mind and this community in mind, and uh, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, this is Mary Rom again, I have one, I just had an observation for the, the commission. Is it the standard practice for an owner of a property to send the tenant to the commission to ask for permission to do something, is there some reason, this is what the history is like here, is there some reason why the actual owner of the property isn't here, it always seems to be the case that something happens there that triggers a meeting like this, and the owner never shows up. I feel sorry for the people who rent the space out there because they're the poor schmucks that sit here in front of this board and have to answer questions about, well, are you gonna pave the lot, or are you gonna do this or that? And it's not up to them to do it, it's the owner, so where's the owner in all of this? It, you know, it's, it's just an observation, I've been to enough of these meetings for that property, and that's the one thing in common to all of them. And that's all I have to say, thanks for, thanks for hearing us, though, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I mean, and, and not to be dismissive of your last comment, I mean, quite often it's a tenant that is applying to do something, you know, regardless of who the owner of the property is, the tenant is probably the one better able to explain, you know, the nature of their business and operations, but, uh, you know, as, as you pointed out, I mean, and, and it happens all over town, quite often tenants end up being the unintended recipients of observations, comments, criticisms and so forth related to the uh, you know, the landlord and the site as a whole. Um, you know, and frankly, sometimes we've been kind of put in a dilemma of, you know, do we, do we punish the, the tenant for what the landlord has done somewhere else on the site, or do we you know, walk a fine line trying to figure out some way to, you know, to allow the tenant to do what they are applying to do, but at the same time, you know, create some kind of meaningful pressure to achieve compliance or remediation from the landlord or owner, you know, elsewhere on the site, and it's, you know, it's not a perfect situation, but it, it does arise frequently, I mean, and then there are some cases where, you know, the owner is, is wise not to appear. Um, Peter, one of the comments or one of the recurring themes was basically how this, you know, north lot sort of manifested itself out of nowhere. Three to five years ago.
Rich, could you?
When there was a prior app.
Hey, Rich.
Back up a little bit, we, you kind of went in and out there, we didn't hear the question.
And if it keeps happening, maybe turn your video off and you won't lag as much.
Yeah, it says I'm unstable.
But how's your connection, though?
Yeah, really, other than that, yeah, um, it, it was basically that, um, you know, th- there was some discussion about how this north lot sort of appeared out of nowhere. Um, you know, a few years ago when there was another application, you know, we went by and it was kind of like, oh wow, all the trees are gone, and you know, the conclusion we all came to at that point was, well, you know, they can cut the trees on their property, but you know, then, then the site was modified to put parking where grass had been, where now there's, you know, a dirt lot is, you know, is, I, I know we've had a, a lengthy enforcement proceeding against the applicant, is there anything pending, or are there any you know, outstanding permits that weren't obtained for this lot, or, you know, is it just kind of it is what it is?
But I think the neighbors described it uh, very accurately, it's been this creek over the years where um, you know, it's quiet for a long period of time, and then they'll cut down the trees, um, then it'll be quiet for a long period of time. And then, you know, there's a gravel parking lot and some fencing, and um, then business shows up, so um, whether it's by design or, or, or some other method, uh, one of those continuing things with this property owner, so the fencing um, does not require a permit, we don't regulate um, fencing and don't require a permit for that, so um, that part, and the tree removal, whether you like it or not, does not require uh, approval, uh, it's when he starts moving dirt around and, and creating parking lots and those kinds of things that um, planning and zoning approval uh, is required, and obviously when he uses the property for any specific purpose, whether it's short-term or long-term, uh, there, there, therein also lies a requirement for a permit, so I'm not sure if that answers your question, but it is the, it is unfortunately the practice of this property owner to do it, um, to do it that way. Um, we do not have any outstanding enforcement actions against uh, the property owner, except for the one that's pending uh, in front of you, they were directed uh, by the building department and by the zoning officer to come in front uh, in front of you. They were directed, uh, by the building department and by the zoning officer to come in front of you and get a permit for this activity. The previous legal, um, uh, issues, uh, were resolved in court and this owner is paying fines related to that. We, the town won that decision and a decision and a financial, um, requirement was applied to that property owner and he is in the, he's in the process of paying that off as we speak.
Okay, thank you.
And that was related to the truck, the trucking.
The box trucks that were being parked.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll speak here at this point if you want, or do you want to continue in some other manner?
No, I, I think.
Hey, I've put up with this site and this owner for thirty years. And I feel very sorry for the people that, uh, residences to the north. And, uh, he incrementally, as we've just learned, does things without permits. And I recommend that we have a complete site review application presented to us and that we, we can't ignore this tonight, can we? But I'd li- almost like to. I, I feel very strongly about this situation that he takes advantage of this commission and this town without really doing. I was surprised to see the old parking lot paved and the fencing all the way around, but this new area that was, trees were cut down and we had to deal with that a few years ago. And so forth, uh, and the problem is creeping closer to these people without an adequate review and provision of our regulation. They, they're not following our regulations. For instance, I'm sure there should be some kind of, uh, area of trees on that north side or something and good sized ones, things of that nature, Peter. And, uh, I would expect that the town would require that and that you would do a, uh, an application. I don't want to deal with this one tonight. I consider this a complaint to us and not an application.
Okay. I guess my two cents on it, or I, I did go by there over the weekend and, you know, I was driving, so I wasn't counting very carefully, but it seemed like there were more than six bucket trucks and they were, you know, obviously highly visible and, you know, particularly when you, when you drove down to the first cul-de-sac once, you know, you, you take a right down at the bottom of the hill, then you're, you know, you're looking up at probably a thirty foot hill to begin with, and then you have the, you know, the extended buckets up above that. You know, no, no humanly possible amount of screening is going to take care of that and, and frankly, you know, given the transitory nature of the uses on the property, I think it would be ridiculous to try to put in fifty foot trees to, to screen that site, but.
And maybe this can't be, maybe we can't approve this then, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, I guess my thoughts are, one, I was going to ask why the buckets have to be up. I'm sure there's a reason either, you know, safety, regulatory or, you know, just operational. And second, I, I think, you know, given the description of the kind of varying numbers of trucks and cars and things, I'd like to have a little more definitive site plan as to what is going on in that north lot as opposed to, you know, what we have.
And show up with appropriate, uh, staffing or the site review. Technical site review.
Well, I mean, I, I guess just basically, I, I wanted to have a better handle on, on what, what is there, what can be accommodated because it's, you know, a red trapezoid superimposed on the site plan of the whole site. You know, it looks like it shows five cars and three trucks and, you know, it's clearly more than that and clearly capable of more than that.
There's, there's apparently no drainage. I don't like the excuses that, that doesn't, there's no drainage. It's a ridiculous comment. There's water coming down everywhere. The town engineer requires all onsite and offsite drainage in particular these days. And, and great detail. So, you know, this, this is, uh, this is just a, a fly-by-night approach here and it's, uh, it's ridiculous in consideration of these neighbors. I'm sorry to be upset, Mr. Chairman, but I've had to put up with this for a lot of, a lot of years, as you have. Cause you have served on the commission almost as long as I have in many ways. So, we have, uh, we've been through it all.
Yeah.
I don't know how the other commissioners feel. I'd like to hear.
I mean, I, I, I'd hate to, to see, I hate to see them punished, um, you know, gentlemen before us today, um, cause I think a lot of these come back to the property owner. But same time.
I think we also had, we had like more of an engineering discussion with like the, the dog, um, daycare property than we are with this one. So, I mean, like, you know, there's, there's potential engineering solutions to at least mitigate what's happening. And then there's the, obviously the larger conversation of like the continued use of that northern section. But, uh, you know, just putting trees up like, I don't know, it's like, and, and, you know, to Commissioner Vieira's point, it's like you're, unfortunately you're punishing him, but like avenues of making that northern area maybe a little bit more useful. Without impacting the neighboring community, like there, there's potential for solutions there, I think.
Yeah.
With noise walls like, cause the fencing that's out there, I don't know. If anybody was out there, it's like, you know, I'm taller than it. So I figure, you know, if you put something that would be a little bit more robust, I mean, they have, you know, timber noise walls that are like fifteen feet high on the highway. So maybe that's something that can be effective here. Whether or not that that's pretty to look at compared to what's out there today for the neighboring community. You know, that's, that's what the debate is for, but, um, you know, seems like we can put a little bit more thought into it.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments on this? I'd like to hear the applicant respond to some of these concerns.
Sure.
Yes, absolutely. So I, I noticed a reoccurring, uh, question was the buckets, um, visible in the air. And unfortunately, pertaining to these neighbors that our safety department, uh, corporate HR, that is required by them to have them up. One for safety of, of community or people trying to climb and, and get in the buckets, because you can operate most, most of the truck from the bucket. The other is security of tooling and, uh, the machinery that's inside the bucket, keeping it up, up in the air at that height. Prevents anything from being stolen, which is, has greatly happened in the past. Another thing about, uh, the paving in the yard. I, I wish I could speak more to that as that, um, this, that. How that yard was put together was before I became involved in this situation, unfortunately, and I wish I knew more and I wish I could do more. But unfortunately that, I can do what I can on, on that, on that note. And then the equipment, I, I know you guys want a, uh, a more accurate statement of what is there. And, uh, I, I apologize for not having a better, uh, better number as in vehicles, as it, it just, it varies greatly every day. Whether it's, it's people coming in, whether the work is there, whether it's raining out at all, i- i- it's a variable. Like today, I know there's probably three or four trucks and, and I'm sure there's been three or four times as many. And we can certainly, um, moving forward, we can definitely disperse that and make it not a, uh, other places we can go without getting rid of everything there, but we can, if that's a main concern about the amount of vehicles traveling on the road, we can, we can work with our other yards and our other, um, employees to, to see where we can disperse these vehicles, um, the best we can while still being able to operate out of that yard. And I know another, another question was about our, our mobile office trailer. And we call it a mobile office trailer because that's what we, we put on site to site or, or show up to show up, whether it's a, a parking lot like this or often the woods somewhere on, on a, on a project through the trees. Mobile office trailer seems to be the term. It doesn't leave with the crews. That is correct. Uh, we, we, I think inside there, there's a, there's fold-up chairs, a fold-up table and, and a printer and copier for our general foreman. Which we have three of and those are really the only people, one allowed to use all of that and two that would ever be in there. In the morning on rain days, uh, everyone's required to come in. We'd have a job briefing whether we're going to assess the day and that's somewhere where we go to have those meetings. Because it is bigger than our office in the building and, and to be generous, the other tenants in the building, we're not tracking mud and crews of people through, through their building to get to our office in the building is just a computer desk for more or less project managers or engineers working, working on a computer. It houses about two people computers. Compared to where that, that office or mobile office trailer out there, um, is for the crews and, and, and the workers themselves. And then the, the tall trailer, um, that can prob- that can be addressed. The tall trailer is where we keep bolts, cones, safety equipment, uh, road signs. Any, any other type of materials other than poles and wires that we may use, consumables, you could call them. It's a whole bolt, that's, that's our mobile storeroom. So in, in Manchester office, our main, our, our main Connecticut office has an entire storeroom, those shovels. Any, any safety equipment, anything that's for that office and those trucks in, in that big trailer is for all that equipment. So show up to show up. All you have to do is hook the trailer up and, and go to the next show up. And we can move quickly and, and get out of the site quickly when need be. But during the time we stay there, that is, that's our storeroom for materials. Any, any consumables or small products. I think I covered, if, if there's any other things I missed, I tried to make notes of everyone's concerns about the property and touch base with everyone. And get them the best answer I can give them, just honestly.
Okay, thanks. Ask the commission, where do you want to go with this? You know, do we want additional information or if so, what?
Mr. Chairman, I've expressed myself as to what I think we ought to do, so.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from the property owner.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I, um, uh, we've got, uh, quite a lot to deal with in this, uh, piece of property and have had for, uh, you know, well over a decade now, um, and it doesn't have more than, than, than certainly more than one decade now and, uh, I, I tend to think we need, uh, one of the things that we need before we would act upon this application is a, uh, a, a re- a report of that would detail, uh, the various, uh, you know, compliance issues, the, uh, past determinations and conditions that have been imposed by, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission is applicable to this property. And what the, uh, status of, uh, uh, of compliance with those conditions are and over the, the lifetime of various enforcement actions and applications with regards to this property. Because our only, our only means of, of, uh, control over really what happens here is when an applicant brings an application that we have to act upon or we are requested to act upon. And I don't think that we're able to exercise that kind of, of authority uh, in an informed way without having a full and complete, uh, uh, you know, uh, history and, and status uh, with regards to, uh, the past, uh, efforts and actions and requirements as it relates to this property. So I would, I would tend to think that we, we would need that, uh, in a, a full and complete report before we would consider this application. So my own feeling is that, uh, we should, uh, delay, um, uh, making any decision with regards to this application until we have, uh, you know, a, a complete report.
I guess just to, to clarify, would you be looking for a complete report of just what is kind of current and outstanding? I mean, for things that are, you know, applications that may have been approved or denied in the past that are no longer relevant? You know, or, or no longer active, the, the enforcement act, uh, action that's been, you know, concluded or just the, the currently applicable requirements and whether or not they're being complied with?
I would tend to think you could limit it to, uh, uh, current, uh, you know, current applicable requirements as it relates to, uh, the ongoing use of this property by the owner and other parties with whom the, uh, the, uh, the owner has a, a relationship with, such as the applicant in question.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I thought that made sense, you know, rather than war and peace about everything going back to nineteen sixty-five here.
Yeah, well, that's, no, I'd say, you know, where, where applicable and where relevant.
Yeah, okay. What, George?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, even though I said we've had difficulties for twenty, twenty, thirty years at this site with this owner. He has done a good job on most of the site at this point. I was in fact impressed with the fencing and the upkeep of the front part and the building and all of that. So we don't want to need to go back over what happened in the past. It's just mainly this new end of the site and maybe some aspects of the existing situation there, but mainly it's that at the end of the site that he's asking for, that they're asking for tonight and that appropriate, uh, requirements such as drainage and paving and, and, uh, any, any, uh, security for the neighbors or anything like that, uh, should be addressed. So, you know, those are the things we have to get a handle on here rather than the approach that we have received tonight. Which is an explanation of what's, what's there. It's really not, it has no dealings with paving, drainage or any of the things that we normally require of an applicant for a site.
Okay. Peter, do you have, do you think you have enough guidance from this discussion to be able to work with the applicant and or the owner to come back with something?
Yeah, I, I think the thing to do is for the town engineer and myself to meet Dan out there on the site. Uh, kind of look at it from the neighbor's perspective and also look at it from the inside of the, uh, parking lot and, and come up with a, a list of things. I've got a, uh, long list of notes, um, that I think will also be factored into that site inspection. So, uh, we'll try and set that up. I, I assume you're going to continue this to the December first meeting or, or thereabouts. So we can set up a, a time to get out there, um, as soon as we can and, and get that, get that in motion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's where we're headed and, you know, given the holiday and so forth, if it, you know, gets bumped off to the meeting after that, you know, so be it. It's just, wanted to make sure that you had some kind of sense as to what people were talking about. Tony?
I think I do have it, yes.
I'd like to ask Peter to also include the number of trucks, maybe that would be limited on that site. The actual location, maybe you have it lined out with or without pavement. But more importantly is to have six trucks or twelve trucks capped out and registered, declared to the town of Weathersfield is taxable. If you're bringing in twenty or thirty thousand dollars of revenue for these trucks to be in the town, you should at least have that. Not have it go to Manchester or have it go to Kentucky. Okay. Uh, does anyone else have anything that they want to, um, weigh in on before we? Way in on before we, believe we make a motion to continue this to December first?
Can I ask a couple of questions before you continue?
Sure.
As far as, I'm probably jumping the gun ahead of this, but let's say hypothetically, this special permit gets approved for these trucks. I mean, how is there, like, there's nowhere, nowhere, no way to police. How many trucks or the traffic or anything that they're going to be generating? So there wouldn't be really any recourse for us. As a community, if we notice that, you know, one day they have twelve trucks or there's a big storm and for an entire week they have trucks. And they're only permitted for six. Is that correct? Or how does that work?
I guess it comes down to what, what the conditions on the approval are as far as, you know. How many trucks would be allowed? And I think before we get to that, we need to have a better handle on what. You know, what's there and what the site can reasonably accommodate and so forth. And, you know, and for better or for worse, um, you know. Town staff can't be everywhere, so.
Right.
You know, if, if hypothetically it's approved for six trucks and, you know, you routinely see eighteen. Um, you know, you, you let the town know, so.
I know, I'm just, I'm concerned, not because of the, the, the tenant. I just think of the past history we've had. With the owner and then the owner, you know, has now sold it to a third party who, so that now he just manages it and it's just. He just has a, not a very positive track record in our neighborhood, um. And that's, so it just concerns me of, you know, if it does get approved, you know, what else he could do. Um, on a different note, um, my last question is. Since this permit is, needs more information to be decided on. Everything's left in limbo until the next meeting and the trucks can stay there until the town decides. Where you're, how are you going to move forward on the special permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's accurate.
Okay.
I have a question on, uh, so are we, when we had the other property do, uh, like a noise analysis, that was on the owner. Right? That's something that they did. Because, you know, we're, we're talking about the difference between. Two trucks and eight trucks and from a disturbance point of view. You're not really going to appreciably notice much of a difference between the two. Like, y- yeah, you're probably going to get like some of the base level, so. Like, I would appreciate somebody weighing in on like what our options are in this kind of case because. You know, we've had, i- i- in this case, it was a dog, uh, property where it was just like. The difference between twenty dogs and forty dogs, you don't notice the, like, but the, like, is because there's like those outlier and that's going to be like the backing up. Or, um, you know, certain operations that are happening like on, on the site. So, you know, I wonder if we're getting into like the more you encroach towards a neighborhood. Without conferring with us, like, the more you need to do to mitigate all the, um. All of the disruption that you're causing. So, like, if there's any other engineered solutions that need to happen because. You know, this northern section, like, I don't know what the outcome is going to end up being, but it seems like it's still going to be in use no matter what. I guess, I guess I would just want to make sure that we're having like a noise discussion along with a use discussion.
And as he noted, the, um, noise, I've noticed that, I looked at the site plan, they'd come to us originally. We approved, if they had opposite handed this site, so the trailer, tra- construction trailers and the mobile trailers for the backside and the trucks were to the backside. They visually wouldn't have been seen by the road that much with their extension up at the, you know, the poles. The poles were, were stored, stored by the road. I mean, I, it's probably too late to do that, but if this was laid out differently. It would be less of an eyesore from the road, I think, for the trucks.
Yep, and sometimes, sometimes common sense works and sometimes you need a noise analyst to, to tell you what's the best option.
Peter, that should give you about three pages of notes.
I, I've added to my, uh, selection, so.
To your lengthy.
Okay. Is there a motion to continue the hearing to December first?
Motion, so, mate, second.
All right, motion by Tony, second by George. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Yeah, opposed? Thank you. Next item, minutes of November fourth.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. A second.
Yeah, there was a second.
Joe's second, Joe's.
Joe, Joe.
No, yeah. Okay, any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
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 Standing.
Okay. Opposed? All right, thanks. The next item, staff reports. We've punished Mr. Morrison long enough. We'll let him. Take the floor with the fence regulations. You, you're muted.
Muted.
Muted. Still muted.
All right. Good night, everyone. So, um, we're here again with the, uh, proposal for the change in the. Fence regulations. Myself, Peter and Derek met, uh, a couple of weeks ago and, um. We decided to kind of, um, throw out the original, um. One that I brought before the board, before the commission. So it was our thought that, um, it was probably a little bit too, uh, long and drawn out. So we have, um, kind of, um, condensed it into what we have now. Um, so we have, um, we have section seven point two fence regulations, then we have a A section. With, um, three subset, four subsections, then, um. Uh, B section with, which speaks to fence and corner lots and visibility at intersection. And then we have a C section which is speaking about, um. No permit being required for fence and what, uh, fence in the rear yard could be. And we also spoke about vegetation and shrubbery that could create an unsafe situation. So. That's what we have, um, here in front of the commission tonight. We, I, I also made a suggestion that, um, the title that's in the. On the website that says, "Application guidance for installation of fences." We changed the guide for installation of fences and it's simply because, um. There's no, there's no application that starts for fences. Um, it's just a guide for the installation. And then, um, there are some recommendations which we, which I propose that we keep those recommendations. Those are those four, uh, fencing suggestions. And, um, also under guide for fencing installation. I would also like to take that last paragraph that says additionally, a retaining wall or freestanding wall or fence. Or other structure not compliant with above provisions may be exempt from the front yard requirement. We want to take that out of the. Regulations because it would already be covered, uh, by section B. On the front page of your, um, document. So that, that's what we're proposing, Mr. Chairman, and, um, I hope that we can, um, move forward with this. New proposal. Um, there's just one other thing that, uh, yesterday. The, um. The engineer, the town engineer made a suggestion that we just kind of modify that last sentence in section B. Which I'm sure we can do and it does make sense. He also suggested that we move it and to the first, the first section that would be on the section A. My, my humble opinion does that we could keep it, we could change the wording, which is, which makes sense and keep it in the same B section. But, um, it's left up to, uh, you know, suggestions what we want to do from here on. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone have questions? The chairman appears to be clear and right to the point. Peter, do you have any comments?
I have a few little tweaks, but we can work that out once we, um, put a final draft together and. Get an application submitted so that we can, um, get the process going and. Um, get this in front of you for a hearing at some point in the relatively near future, so. Uh, but no, in, in, uh, concept and in principle, uh, I think, um. The effort to simplify it, keep it relatively consistent with what we presently have and just tweak it a little bit is, um, is the best, uh, best approach. We sat down with the town engineer, uh, Charles and myself and, uh, took the previous version and, and, you know, modified it significantly. So I think this gets us, gets us, um, very close to the mark with some minor revisions, which I'm happy to work with Charles on and. Get that back to you, uh, in relatively short order.
Here, this is for installation of residential zones only, right? If I want to read in the first sentence?
Um, yes, well, let me just, it's in the, it's, let me just see this. It's in section seven point two. Which is, um. That's a good question.
It says installation of fences, but it doesn't say residential fences.
Right. Doesn't say commercial either, so.
Yeah, um, this, this section is typically speaking to, um, to residential fencing, yes.
Yeah, that should be in the title.
But you raise a good point that it, if we may, we may want to not apply it to commercial, given obviously. You had an example tonight, this, you know, well, I don't know what the height of that fence was, but, um, so, so that's a, you make a good point that we probably need to talk about and just. Clarify that.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is just general performance standards.
So probably it, it applies across the board then, so we may, we may need to be mindful of. Whether we need to tweak it as it relates to commercial properties or have some exceptions or something like that.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, we probably, possibly could just have a, you know, kind of a caveat at the end saying that. You know, in commercial and industrial areas, the commission may impose such other requirements as. You know, may be appropriate for the, for the site.
Sounds good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Good. Thanks very much for your efforts on this.
Okay, and, um, before, if there's no other comment, uh, before we proceed, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to bring up point of interest here, um, regarding the. Zoning Board of Appeals application that we have received. Um, I noted the, um, email that was received, that was sent out today and, um. I do apologize for not bringing this to the, to the commission's, um, attention before. Uh, however, um, the zoning regulations section ten F four. Speaks to the fact that prior to any action on a use variance, the zoning board of appeals shall submit the applications. For such use variance to the planning and zoning commission. And any report submitted by the commission shall be read at the public hearing and be part of the record of application. I, I, I felt that we, we could go to the board of appeals and then the way all the regulations is written and then the board of appeals. Would, um, make a submission to the zoning commission, uh, before any action. But maybe it should be the other way around. We should have brought it to the zoning commission first and foremost. And then, um, the zoning commission would submit a report if any to the commission and then, um. The commission would act on that and, um, come up with a conclusion. Um, I'm just throwing this out for, uh, discussion, Mr. Chairman, as to how we proceed from here and, um. I would make it my point of duty that any other zone, um. Use variance that comes before the zoning board of appeals, we made the appropriate submission to the planning and zoning commission before it even. Gets open in the zoning board of appeals.
No, I, I, I really appreciate that. And I mean, that was something that was added in the regulations, I don't know, fifteen years ago. And. It, it just kind of was overlooked consistently and I think frankly, the only. The only time that we had a, an issue with it was with the, the car dealership on. Street and the Berlin Turnpike. You know, because it came to us basically as a fait accompli where all we could do was. You know, count the cars on the site, you know, and not weigh in on the use, but, um, it was something that. Because of circumstances long before you were here and probably before Peter was here. You know, we had some issues with use variances, so we made a specific point that at least having it referred to. Planning and zoning or, you know, some kind of feedback as to, yeah, that makes sense in that particular zone or. You know, are you insane? Um, you know, somewhere in the, in the spectrum between those two things. You know, just basically getting a temperature check from planning and zoning. Um, understanding that the ultimate decision still rested with the ZBA. You know, it was something that we wanted to have and, you know, it, it was, it was the kind of thing that since. The vast bulk of the variances have to do with dimensional things. You know, having it, having it as a checklist, oh, this is a use variance, we've got to do something different with is something that. You know, none of your predecessors had on their checklist either, so it's not like. You know, it's, it's anything particular to, to your tenure. But I, you know, I, literally somebody asked me last night, you know, what's the sign for? You know, and I looked it up and said, oh, it's a use variance, gee. You know, so I think, you know, just when you get an application for a use variance. You know, sending it to Peter to include in the packet for the next meeting. And if we have anything to say about it, you know, it'll, it'll get back to, you know, get back to you to go to the ZBA for their hearing. You know, and again, ultimately, it's their decision, but it is, you know, something that we had consciously put into the regulations because of. Instances in the past. You know, for example, I think at one point, almost all of the drive-through. Windows in town were use variances, um, rather than anything that was regulated. And there were a couple of other situations where, uh, you know, there, there were uses that were consciously not permitted in certain zones. And then magically they would appear, so, uh, it was something that we had purposely and intentionally put into the regulations. But, um, it happens rarely enough that. It just kind of fell through the cracks occasionally.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I would also like to mention at this point to that, um, that property in question, one oh five Marsh Street. It was actually approved by the zoning board of appeals. The parents was approved by the zoning board of appeals in two thousand and sixteen. For the property to be used as a, a church, a public assembly in an agricultural zone. Just for the records.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, and we didn't, and the use variance wasn't referred to us then either, so.
And, um, and the point is that, uh. And, and the point is that the, it was not filed on the land record. Hence, it was, it became null and void. So they have to return to the board of appeals, just to give
No, okay.
In that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just one other thing to bring to your attention. I got a phone call from the Weatherfield Country Club. The recent storm and the, you know, period of time that it's been up, the screening and netting at the driving range is, some of the poles, I think have actually deteriorated to the point where they need to replace many of them and then put up a new, new series of nets to keep the, the long hitters or the, or the shankers or, I don't know what the other term is in golf, from hookers. I, yeah, thank you for setting me up on that. From going into the neighborhood. So the building department is going to require some engineering in terms of wind loads and how deep the poles are going to be. I didn't necessarily view it as something that has to come back to you guys because it's really just in-kind replacement of nets and poles with obviously new equipment. But I wanted to mention that in case there's some strong feelings about that. This does not pertain to that one section that was put in without permission and the neighbor, I believe he came, came to this commission to express his, his concerns about that. It applies to the stuff that exists, existed before. So I just wanted to bring that up and get any feedback I could from you guys, if you guys feel differently than I did or, or you agree or not.
I think the engineering department working with you.
So it's just replacing something that had either existed or was permitted or so forth before.
Yeah, and we will look at it at the staff level, just to confirm that and make sure they're not doing something above and beyond what was approved there before. But I didn't, they, they asked if they needed to factor in, you know, visits to the ZBA or the planning and zoning. So, and that was, as I say, just yesterday.
No, that sounds fine to me.
Okay.
Know what anybody else thinks.
That means I gotta go and walk the site out there and I don't want to do that.
The driving range is clear, George, before you go out there.
I know, might get hit with a couple.
If I let them know you're coming, George.
Yeah. All right, public comments. There is no public. November 20th development report, that was included as correspondence. Do you have anything to add to that or?
No, I just, I gave this presentation to the town council. Fortunately, it was early in their meeting because they were there, I think, until midnight last night. Unless you have any questions, there's a lot of activity going on in old Weatherfield, a whole bunch of things. And we got a couple of projects, you know, under construction, the, the former Purton Furniture. If you've also been up to the former Pet Supply up on the Berlin Turnpike, that came together pretty nicely. And then I, the rest of the stuff you guys, because you've been reviewing and approving these things. So yeah, in case you have any questions on anything on the list.
Thanks very much.
Sure.
Oh, no problem. Ending the applications, what's 140 Silvestine?
140 Silvestine is the pad site at the Silver Cove Shopping Center. Many years ago, they proposed another pad restaurant out in the deteriorated part of their parking lot, corner of Jordan Lane and Silvestine Highway.
Like pad Thai or some other kind of pad restaurant?
Just a pad, outlying, a pad site. This, this particular restaurant is Popeyes Louisiana Chicken with a drive-through. Apparently the best chicken sandwich, I guess, you can get by some positions.
I, I think that's, that's common knowledge.
Yes.
Design review has looked at it already, I heard, Mr. Chairman.
They looked at it once. They had some
They tried a sandwich.
They wanted, no, they didn't, they didn't come bearing sandwiches. So don't get
That'll grease the wheels, literally.
Don't expect that. It's going to design review, I think, for the second time, either tomorrow night or next, or next week. It'll be before your next meeting.
Is it going to be an, an actual restaurant or just a drive-through?
They're pretty small restaurants. So it is, it does have some seating, but I think a lot of their business is done through the drive-through because it's only, I think, like a 20, 2,400 square foot footprint.
Okay.
The only thing Joe Hickey told me, Mr. Chairman, about it, he said was nothing to do with the design. I asked him, did you ask him about that? And he, no. He said, they discussed, he said he brought up the right of way around it. I guess that he had some concern with that and the intersection around it. I don't know. Well, get that.
Yeah, I mean, there's kind of a funky traffic arrangement over in that corner of the site. But it's basically, nobody's ever had to pay attention to it because it's just kind of a sinkhole of pavement for the last 25 years. Right. All right. No, that'll be good. And the other one is Heirloom Market.
Yes, this is their larger plan. They, if you recall, you approved a liquor permit for them. So as part of that, this is now the, the broader plan of what they want to do with some of the spaces. They want to move some things around and add to their occupancy.
Okay. Do you think either of those will be at the next meeting or is it too soon for that?
They, they both would like to be at the next, the December 1st meeting, so.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have anything they want to bring up tonight? I'll take that as a no. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
Okay. Okay, George made the motion. Mike seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Thanks very much. Have a good evening. Have a good Thanksgiving. Stay healthy.
You too. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good thanks, everybody.
Have a great
Good to see you at a real meeting.